To do anything in your power to investigate and do what is right, and that is returning Juan Antonio to the Buckley family. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that did not sign up to speak that wishes to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll close public presentations.
Chairman, that brings us to the board's consent agenda. Consent agenda items are as follows. First is the approval of the April 10 and 12, 2018 Board Meeting Minutes. Second is to accept and authorize a budget adjustment for the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development's 2018 Virginia Telecommunication Initiative Grant Award of $167,260 and to accept MOU with Comcast Communications for their match in the amount of $200,503 for a total budget of $367,763. This is a project to extend cable access down Tolsmill Road. Item three is to accept a budget adjustment and appropriation for the 2018 Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant for law enforcement staff. This is for a position relating to wellness in the sheriff's office, $46,226. Item four is the appointment of Mr. Mike Grubb to the Rappahannock Emergency Medical Services Council Incorporated for a term that expires on May 8th of 2021. This is at the recommendation of Chief Cullinan. Next is the appointment of Mr. Richard Thompson to the Citizens Budget Review Committee for a term that expires December 31st of 2019. His appointment is from the Cortlandt District. Item six is the appointment of Scott Phelps as an alternate to the Citizen Budget Review Committee for a term that expires December 31st, 2019, also from the Cortlandt District. Item seven is to approve a contract renewal for James River Solutions for delivered unleaded gasoline, diesel highway, and diesel off-road fuels. Most recent costs available, this will be gas at $2.40, diesel off-road at $2.43, diesel on-road at $2.59. Of course, the price fluctuates with a standard adjustment, but as you can see, it's good below-market prices for fuel delivered principally for our landfill. I have lost the computer. Item eight is the approval of four contract modifications for the renewal of multiple firms to provide professional engineering services. This is the second of four available renewals of contracts for outside engineers. Item nine is the approval of a purchase order to Rush Truck Centers of Virginia for a refuse roll-off truck for our chancellor landfill, the amount of $138,900. Note, we've got nearly 300,000 miles out of the last vehicle that's being replaced. Item 10 is approval of a budget amendment and appropriation for fire and rescue local services overtime. It's a budget increase of $9,400. Item 11 is approval of a budget amendment and appropriation for stormwater management compliance. It's an adjustment of $90,000. Item 12 is the approval of a budget amendment and appropriation for sheriff's office local services overtime, the amount of $75,000. This additional cost is covered by the payment for those services that is received. Item 13 is the approval of a budget amendment and appropriation to reflect an increase in state and federal funding for child welfare line items in our budget, the amount of $1,191,292. This is due to increased service demands. Item 14 is our capital projects budget amendments relating to closeout and adjustment of individual project budgets. So this is a true-up of multiple projects. Item 15 is a grant application request for the 2018 and 19 School Resource Officer and School Security Officer Incentive Grant Program, supplying for a grant of $127,460. And we'll have a local match of $226,257 for a total of $353,717 for school resource officers. Item 16 is a recommendation for reappointment of Mr. Mark J. Stepanzi to the Board of Zoning Appeals effective August 1st of 2018 for a term to expire August 1st of 2023. This is for the chancellor district. And the addition of the bullpen item, which was the adoption of a resolution to request economic development access program funds from VDOT for the grant to improve access to property off of Tidewater Trail behind IDX. And that is your consent agenda.
Any board member want to pull any of these that were listed? Any discussion? Mr. Skinner?
Mark, on the very last one, number 16, the recommendation for reappointment of Mark J., is that a five-year term? It is, right? Has that always been that way?
Yes, sir. That's the Board of Zoning Appeals term set by statute, I believe.
Okay. Thank you. That's...
I'd like to ask Mark a question. You mentioned in the, as you read the consent agenda on item number nine, the refuse truck that we used previously, we've got 300,000 miles out of it. Do you know what the make was of that?
Just under. Ed, any idea what make the refuse roll-off truck was that is being replaced?
No, I don't have any information with that.
A long walk for a short answer.
I don't know what make it was. It had 295,000 miles on it, and it was 2008 or 2009, but I don't know what make it was.
Okay. Because the reason I was asking is, as you look through the bids, it was several different makes of trucks, Mack, Freightliners, Internationals. We had a certain make that lasted us for 300,000 miles, is a couple thousand dollars difference. I would like to stick with the one that lasted for 300,000 miles. But not knowing...
Yeah, it's been my experience that, you know, with the diesel trucks and the way that we use them, 300,000 miles, you know, is about the life expectancy that you can get out of a vehicle like that, considering the use. And we do have different makes and models, so they typically tend to run about 300,000 miles.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Pull item six, please.
Also, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item one.
Item one. Anybody else? All right, can we get a motion to approve the agenda except for six and one?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Trampy to approve the agenda except for six and one. How do we do that down?
Seven, yes.
All right. Just one thing for... Is there any way that we can see that?
Well, we have received a comment from a viewer, board members, that the votes are too small to see on the screen at home, but Jane has assured me we can adjust that in the future. I just don't believe that's possible to adjust now. So if Mr. Cole would announce the vote very distinctly, that would be helpful to folks watching at home.
All right. Since Mr. Yakubowski was first, we'll go with item number six.
Thank you. Is this the spouse of the school board member from Lee Hill? It is. Okay. I will vote for them, but I'm starting to see the CBRC continue to go off the rails. Now we have previous members coming in, basically moving for us to have an internal auditor, which I think would then negate the need for a CBRC. I would like to review the CBRC perhaps at the end of the summer and see what benefit that is to the county. According to their bylaws, they still have not produced a report that they were supposed to, that we worked hard to produce these bylaws. So if we want to change the bylaws, we should change the bylaws, but if the bylaws are there, they should follow them. Thank you. And Mr. Ross, since it's your appointee, I'll let you make the motion.
Motion to approve the alternate to CBRC.
Motion by Mr. Ross to approve number six.
Seven, yes.
All right. Mr. Marshall, number one.
Yeah, just one quick correction to the minutes from April 12th, page two. It says when we set the tax rate on page two, it says it's $83.30. That's something we probably need to move the decimal places over two spots to the left and get that corrected. Can make that correction.
Amy, have you noted that? All right. All right, so we need a motion to approve number one.
Make a motion to approve.
All right. With the motion to approve, number one, with the correction noted by Mr. Marshall.
Seven, yes.
I think we're at board reports.
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Ross.
Okay. Thank you. Mark, could you bring up the floor computer for me? And while I do that, so it's come to my attention that the library at the town center that we approved last week, or two weeks ago, for funding needs a name. And in order to even start procurement, they need to procure the name of the library. And I thought it would be best for our board to vote on that, that name, and I'm just going to recommend that we call it the Spotsylvania Town Center Library. Unless anybody else... Unless we want to name it after Carl.
[laughing].
Or Gary. So with that, I'm just going to make a... Unless, are there any other recommendations? I know this is kind of last minute. It kind of came to me last minute, too. I was actually having some research done. I think there was a family named Mason quite a long time ago that used to own the farm where the mall sits. I don't know if we want to wait on that. It'd be a good way to recognize the former landowner of that area, but I think it'd be probably more convenient to citizens if we just called it Spotsylvania Town Center Library.
Any discussion from the board?
I'll make a motion that we name the library in the mall, the Spotsylvania Town Center Library.
All right. Motion by Mr. Ross for the name of the library to be Spotsylvania Town Center Library.
Seven, yes.
Okay. The next thing that I'd like to talk about is, we just heard, and Mr. Yakubowski brought up, and they brought up in the audience tonight, several speakers did, about hiring an internal auditor. I have a question. Can we do an internal auditor for both the county and the schools that reports back to the board? Is that... I'll tell you what. Here's what I'm going to ask, is that our next meeting, that we put on the agenda, a discussion with any kind of facts that staff can put on there, about hiring an internal auditor that would report to the board of supervisors for both the county's budget and finances and the schools. And we can have a discussion about that at our next meeting. I would also like to add to the agenda, and I've asked about this before, is adding a fraud, waste, and abuse hotline for county and schools that you can call, that somebody could call in and report anything that they might see. Where are we on the floor computer? Okay. If you bring it up, please. So I can scroll the mouse if you need to. So it was also... Okay, you got it. So it was brought up by several speakers tonight, too, and thank you for coming out and speaking, because it kind of brought home something I wanted to bring up as well. And so the public can see, I've taken some screenshots of what was presented to the board of supervisors by the school board on February 15th, 2018, and then I've taken the following screenshots of what was presented and passed by the school board after our budget, after we appropriated the money for the next budget year, for fiscal year 19. So if you go down to the next slide, I just wanted to bring up some things. I know that we asked for a school board member to be here or for the superintendent to be here tonight. I don't see them out here. But I do think it's good that we trust each other, and I think it's good that we have a good relationship with each other. So these are just some concerns that I'm going to bring up, but I think it's easy to go back so we don't, you know, get into a contest about whether it was said or not. But this was an enrollments trend that was presented to us, and it shows an estimated 82 student increase for the fiscal year, or the next school year, from 18 to 19. It went from 23, 814, they're in the middle, to 23, 896. Hopefully, that's big enough for people at home to see. I think, Jane, you may be able to blow that up a little bit. A little... Yeah. Okay. If you could also then... So this is what we were presented with. If you could scroll down to page seven, and the numbers on the top right. So on page seven, this is, and I think it's a different term, but it's ADM Trends, where it shows the student population, which shows FY '18, actual of 23, 174, and the projected for fiscal year 19 going up one student. So there's a little disconnect here in what we were shown and then what was shown at the school board's budget after we appropriate. If you go back up, Jane, then. So... Okay. Next slide down. All right. I had this in there. It's not really relevant. There are links to this Word document that does have our average spending. I think Dr. Trampy had addressed this during, when it was presented. You scroll down. Okay. So this was the... Again, this is the brief that was to us from the school board about the Evergreen Study. Have you scrolled back down? Next slide down. And this was the plan then. It was the hybrid approach. It was a 2% pay increase to all employees, teachers and non-teachers. And then it was a 2% hybrid Evergreen penetration parity recommendation. Again, this is what was briefed to us. It would just be for teachers for year one of three. And that was presented to us, but apparently, somewhere between the time we passed the budget, which was on a Thursday, and the following Monday, I believe, there was another $750,000 to $800,000 of reoccurring money found in the school's budget, which goes back to the auditing concerns we had tonight. If you scroll down to the next slide. So this is, again, there's the links to our average spending, but this one, this is then what was briefed to the school board on April 16th. Scroll down. There's the slide we reviewed previously. So here is, in their brief, even showing that their original compensation, which was briefed to us, and the line one is that 2% increase to all employees. And then the second row down has the 2% increase just to the teachers. And you scroll down to the next slide. So this is where the new finding was, to do a 2% increase for, I think it's everybody but the top administrators. So the $795,088 somehow was, in my understanding, again, we asked the school person to be here tonight or not, was found between the time we passed the budget on Thursday and the following Monday. So we do need a trusting relationship, and this doesn't help, but maybe there's an explanation, and I would really like somebody from the school system to come out and explain it at our next meeting, which we requested tonight. So next slide down. I think that might be it. I think this is then from their brief of what was passed by the school board of what was actually the pay raises, the average increase for the different labor categories. And I think that is... This is another screenshot of their post-brief. So that's my request from going through this, and I also just wanted to make it transparent to the public of what we see, what we understand, and hopefully we'll get some resolution on this. So that's all I've got for board reports.
Mr. Taylor, do we know why Dr. Baker is not present?
I was advised, Mr. Chairman, that Dr. Baker has been out of town at a conference and would not be back in time to be able to attend this meeting today.
Can we go ahead and extend another invitation?
Invite him for your next meeting.
Yes. Mr. McLovin?
So I just want to touch on that. Mr. The superintendent did call me this week because he wanted to inform me he was not going to be able to make it, because I'd made the original request for the superintendent, maybe the school board chair, to come and maybe explain how some of these numbers evolved over those three days between the passing the budget and the school's budget. Superintendent did call me. I asked the same questions. Where did the additional $800,000? And I don't want to get into it too much because he's not here to explain it, but he mentioned that as they went through his team, he says that he has a short staff and they're not... They didn't have enough time to finish everything until Monday. So he said, as they scrubbed the positions that were being funded, there was a number of positions that were no longer required, so that accounted for the $800,000. But I think it'd be better if he explained that. And my only concern is, why didn't we know that three days earlier? That those positions should have been scrubbed earlier, so it may have made a difference on the board. And it may have made a difference if we knew we only had one student growth in the following year, because when you add those together, that's essentially what we increased the taxes by, the amount of money for those new, those pay raises for the teachers, or for all school employees, and the reduction to one student. And the frustrating point to me is that we didn't give the same opportunity to all county employees. So this was, decision was made after the fact where we couldn't make those changes. So that's my frustration, and I would like to have the superintendent have a chance to come back and address those to the board, because this goes back to transparency and making sure we're all on the same sheet as we move forward. And I think, and I agree with, as Mr. Yakubowski, this is a great opportunity for us to hire an auditor that can look at all the departments, not just singling out the schools. And I think the school's become an issue because it's, you know, when you take it all together, it's 60-plus percent of the overall tax revenue that comes in and out of the county. So of course, they're going to get more scrutiny, but I think every department needs to be, have a fresh look in from outside eyes that report to, maybe through the county administrator and the superintendent, but ultimately come back to the boards for decisions. But that's all I had to say for now. Thanks.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Thank you. You know, if we want to have a good relationship with the school board, we don't do this kind of stuff. I'll tell you, they're an elected body, just like the sheriff's, elected commissioner of revenue, treasurer. I've never seen their budgets pulled up on the screen and gone through things said that they said and let them come here and explain themselves. The superintendent also called me, explained it all. I also watched the school board work session, which if other board members didn't do it, I would encourage them to do it. This type of language is not helpful. It just isn't. Saying that there was $800,000 that was not there, that they just pulled off the shelf somewhere and put, and I'm not going to say what, how he explained it to me, because I will let him do that, but it made perfect sense. I'll tell you, this is what we need quarterly work sessions for, so we can sit with our counterparts. The superintendent does not work for us. In fact, in many localities, the superintendent doesn't ask or answer phone calls from anybody else, because he works as our county administrator, works for this board, the superintendent works for that board. I'm not sure if any school board members call up Mr. Taylor and ask him to explain things to them, but I just think that it's, there's a level of courtesy that we need to have that we will then have a better working relationship. Asking the questions, ask away. I think that we need to get the answers. We need to know exactly what is going on, and I have absolutely no problem with asking the questions. But I think that we need to do it in a respectful manner and in a proper manner, so that our relationship that we have with the school board, which I think is pretty positive, will continue to be positive as we work together. Some of these things that are said and people that come up and say things and, you know, it just, it's hard to keep playing catch-up with every bit of information that is out there, whether it is correct or not. For example, I'd heard from somebody who had told me that the schools in the county should buy health insurance together, and the fact that we don't is costing millions of dollars, and it's the county's fault. Or I'm sorry, it's the school's fault, because they won't work with us on buying health insurance together. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we do pool together to get our health insurance rates, and then different plans are offered. And I'm pretty sure that the county covers the increase, or we have in past years, out of our healthcare reserve. I know that the schools don't some of the increase, because we've had the retirees here, and we have allocated money in years past. So misinformation that is out there is just not helpful, and I think that we need to get back to our quarterly meetings with them and perhaps even more, so that we can go through these issues, we can talk about it, we can have as much openness as possible. But I think there's a better way to do it. Thank you.
Dr. Trampy?
No report.
Mr. Marshall?
I would also like to see this $800,000 not so much answered for. I grew with Mr. Yakubowski. We need to continue to have and want to have a transparent working relationship with the school board. But on hindsight of that, when we approve a tax rate, we were tasked with, basically in a 48-hour period, hey, we may be $2 million short. $800,000 would have made a big difference in that $2 million shortage. So when you look at these numbers and you compare the $800,000 to $2 million, we could have been short. We were lucky we were not short that $2 million. During that time of number crunching, that would have been very helpful to have known. Glad they found it. I mean, I'm sure everybody wants a raise, so I'm happy to support that the teachers got the 4%. And I would like to know how it was found. I haven't seen, you know, I would like a presentation from them. On another note, that is, I'd like to acknowledge that we do have the, today is a teacher appreciation day here nationally. I'd like to thank all the teachers that we have in Spotsylvania County. They do a wonderful job educating our children, and I hope they continue to keep it up and continue to do what they're doing for our kids.
Mr. Skinner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With all the information that we've got and the interest in this S-Power, a question I have, and I'd like the county administrator, if he could, please, or someone on his staff, to look into how many rooftops... Obviously, the school has 32 schools, facilities, I believe, and we have quite a few facilities. And I'd like us to start considering what the chance... I think we pay $8 million a year on electricity?
That is correct, Ms. Skinner. In rough terms, that's for the school division facilities and for the county facilities together.
Okay. So my point is, it was brought to my attention by some, you know, some big companies out here, that they're putting solar energy on the top of their roofs, okay? And it's cutting back 60% of their cost, and the ROI on that is for five years. So I think it would be worthwhile, and this is probably separate from S-Power, but what I'm asking is that, is this a potential savings for the county? If they're saving 60% in the first year and we're spending $8 million, is there a potential of $4.8 million to be saved? I think, and with an ROI of over just five years? I think we should look into that, and what I'd like, if it's with no objection from the board, is that the county administrator finds somebody to tell us, how many rooftops do we really have, okay? How much area are we talking about for both the county and the school system? Because I think there's some potential savings there for doing. Now, there are different, I've looked into it, there are different roofs that we have. Some would be capable of handling and exactly what type of solar panel. But as everybody knows, and while we're getting solar power, solar panels have now come down in price. It's now becoming reasonable, and of course, with alternative power, renewable... It's now becoming a reasonable, and of course, with alternative power, renewable power, it's something that this county needs to look into if we want to seriously bring down the budget. Where can we save money in, you know, doing that? So I just wanted to bring that attention to the board members, because it was brought to my attention by a company out here that's actually doing it, okay? So I appreciate that, and there's also, I think, a possibility, if we don't use all the energy, to sell it back. I know that some companies work a lot at night, and it really does help, okay? That's when they use the majority of the stored power, so just an item, and without objection, I ask the county administrator to do that for us. Thank you. And I think that's all I've got, sir.
All right. Chair, just make a couple of comments. I know, do know that school staff apparently found out that instead of, I think it was a 3% increase in their healthcare, it was going to be a 4%. So when you see the 4% that was given to a number for their, for their teachers, a lot of them are going to see nil because of the, it's going to have to offset the healthcare increase. I was also mentioning about our custodial staff going from contracted to straight employees. Well, personally, I have, I have visited a number of schools several times, and I, with kids in the schools, I go to both Robert E. Lee Elementary School and Post Oak regularly. And I can tell you firsthand, seeing the contracted work that was supposedly done, compared to the staff work that was done, there is no comparison. The paid custodial employees that we have for the schools do an outstanding job. They bust their rear ends and it's pretty clean. But I can tell you, when the contractors were there, I visibly, you could visually see the difference once they left and the regular custodials took over. It was night and day. So that's my own personal experience with it. The out-of-county students, the comment that was made on that, I get it, I understand why they're doing it, but like I've said before, I think there has to be a cutoff point. And I'll just save a lot of that conversation, hopefully, on our next joint meeting. But anyway, the S-Power comment about the sludge or bio-silids, I think that's where the, the presentation was going. They've already said they are not using bio-silids. And the comments about DSS, as far as the numbers of foster care, the drain on personnel, and the opioid, opioid crisis, you know, we depend on our staff and the professionals out there to see it every day, to recommend to us what they need and what, what we need to do as a board to fund various projects. To date, I can't recall, number one, with DSS, requesting additional staff to support coming before us. I can't, I don't remember staff, fire, rescue, or anybody else coming before us and requesting a certain program be funded to help with the opioid problem. So to sit here and accuse us that we've done nothing, we depend on staff and the department heads and outside sources to, to kind of guide us and advise us what we, what's needed and what programs can be done to thwart some of these issues. So sitting here saying we've done nothing, I don't think was fair to us. Lastly, I had my, a community meeting or town hall at Fawn Lake last night in reference to this S-Power. I just want to thank that community for allowing me to come in there and speak to them, again, very, at the very early stages of this project. I think the meeting went very well, I think. But, and I think there was a good exchange of information and plenty of questions, and I just thank them for that opportunity, and that's all I have.
Mr. Skinner?
Sorry, but I'd like to follow up on something that you said. If we're going to have a meeting with the, with the school board, and we're going to talk about students that come outside the county, because basically, it's with the parents, if they teach there, their children are allowed to come and go to school there. I think it would be very important if we would find from the school board exactly how much it costs for us to train a teacher, and if that teacher leaves, what we're losing to get another trained back, okay? Because I think it's only fair to see the costs that we're having to put teachers through training supposedly, okay? And if that's a reason for teachers leaving because our kids or their children cannot go to the school, I think, just, let's try to balance everything out and see if there is an effect there. That's all I'm asking for in that one. So prior to us meeting with the board, if that subject's going to be brought up, I'd certainly like the schools to go ahead and give us a comparison of what it costs and to lose that student, because we have two children that are going to the school, and what it actually costs for that student to go to our school, per teacher, and what it costs for us to replace that teacher. I think that's something that would make a good comparison.
Okay. We'll move on. We have a presentation by Social Services, Mr. Taylor, I believe that's next.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Gail Crooks is here. Anna Herr. Deputy, and Mr. Robert Beard, who is contract legal advisor to Social Services for the county. Again, this is an informational presentation regarding process. Floor computer, please. Your microphone activated.
Now, does floor computer, please? Thank you. So, good evening. Anna is passing out the handouts of the slide presentations, and she has some extra copies as well. Tonight, I'm here to provide a brief overview of the structure of the Child Welfare Services function of the Department of Social Services and checks and balances within that structure. And so within me tonight, as, as Mr. Taylor introduced, is Anna Johnson, she's our deputy director, and Mr. Robert Beard. Mr. Beard is the DSS legal counsel, and he's here to respond, should the board have any questions specific to laws governing child welfare services that are beyond the material in this presentation. So the opportunity for the presentation was requested, as there had been put forth the suggestion that the local government of social, the local Department of Social Services operates without oversight or direction, or perhaps more appropriately, without sufficient oversight or direction. And it is our desire that the board and the community have confidence in the operations of the agency. In prior presentations, it's been noted that there are multitude of programs and, that are administered by the agency, each with its own set of rules and regulations and frequently state and federal laws. And while the agency is required to keep case information confidential, we are certainly open to review of our practices and procedures, and we'll always try to be as responsive as possible to inquiries. And we understand that the inability to share specific information may present as confusing or maybe even possibly evasive, but our responsibility is to the governing rules and laws of the programs, and our commitment is to the best outcomes possible for children and families under those policies, regulations, and laws. So outside our Holiday Hope program, which is supported by donations from the community, our programs and the delivery of those programs is determined by federal law, state code, and state policy. Our presentation tonight is on the agency's child welfare functions, and there are at least 13 federal laws or acts that address the requirements of foster care. And state code provides the definitions for abuse and neglect in child welfare, requirements for investigations, rights of families involved in child welfare services, case elements, and timelines for specific case elements. The state has six practice principles that are woven throughout the case management activities and requirements, and all of these together are what create local agency policies and practices. In front, well, to my right a little bit, is the Child and Family Services Manual, and it's available on the VDSS public website and provides the details of what I'll be briefing you on this evening. And the manual will also contain the specific code references that drive a particular action or decision point. And yes, that's one manual, and it's double-sided. So the generally accepted description of the social services system in Virginia is state-supervised, locally-administered. So everything that happens in a local agency is subject to review by State Office of Social Services, and that review is both outside a case lifecycle and in a case lifecycle. It occurs formally and informally, and formal reviews are listed here. The quality assurance and accountability review is onsite, and it's to ensure the locality has accomplished and documented all required actions in opening a foster care case. Every case is reviewed the month following its opening, and they look for documentation compliant with federal-state requirements, fully executed court orders, appropriate verifications, etc.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Gail, if I might?
Sure.
Could you tell us, when you're going through these, who would be doing the review?
Sure. So the quality assurance and accountability review, most of these are going to be from the state. So the state has a QAA function, and so they send someone onsite to do the review of the files, and they will be onsite for the full day or however long it takes to do these. And so the quality service review is actually the same person, but they're looking at the cases from a different perspective. Now, they're looking at whether they're, these are the active custody cases, and they're making sure that we are staying compliant with the federal and state requirements that dictate foster care cases. So then there's the agency case review for CPS ongoing and foster care. And this is an annual review.
Ms. Crooks?
Yes.
The QAA, is that just, they're reviewing paperwork, right?
They are reviewing the case documentation, yes. And that is also with the QSR. The agency case review for CPS ongoing and foster care, it's an annual review of the electronic case records remotely, and then it's followed up by an onsite review of the hard copy record, and this is performed by program staff, the program consultants that are in the regional office. Then there is the Child and Family Services review. Now, this is a more intense version of the agency case review, and it's done by someone from the state home office, not the regional office. So it's another level, it's a different set of eyes, and it's an onsite, week-long review conducted by persons from the home office, and it's against the federal criteria. And this one is not only a review of the hard record, but it also includes interviews of staff and of family members involved in child welfare cases, and the local agency is not present during those interviews, so we can't influence them. The agency just underwent this review in April. An official report is not issued to the agency, but any gaps in performance or noncompliance with policy or practice expectations would be shared. And the child fatality review is an annual review, but an agency only participates in that review if there's a child fatality in the locality where the family had involvement with child welfare in some form. The agency also has informal reviews on case management and practices. The most obvious would be constituent concerns received by the regional or the state office. Both of those bodies can do a remote review of the case record, and if there are questions or concerns, they will ask the agency to respond. At times, they come onsite to both interview and review the hard copy record. And if there are gaps in the documentation or concerns about gaps in practice, they will expect the agency to rectify those concerns. And I think if an agency failed then to address those concerns brought to them by the regional or the home office, then the local board, in which in our cases, our county administrator, would be notified of those gaps and failures to rectify. When we have been contacted by the home office or the regional office with constituent concern, the agency has always been open to their full review. We want to know if there is a gap in a practice or somewhere we have not correctly interpreted or correctly applied policy, so that we can be the best agency that we can be. All reviews are regarded as learning opportunities. And I also include here, under informal review, is the FACT, which is the Family Assessment and Planning Team, which is the service planning team of the Children's Services Act or CSA, and team members are the local experts in mental health, the schools, the court services unit, and of course, foster care. And almost every foster care case goes before this team at least once, and members of this team, who do not report to the agency, do not hesitate to ask the hard questions about placement, about services, about case management, and family involvement. So DSS, next slide. DSS is... How you doing? Yes. No, we, yes, thank you. So DSS is not a closed system, and by that, I mean, there are persons who are actively involved in a child welfare case that are external to the agency and whose actions, decisions, and recommendations are not under DSS direction or influence. They are expected to be independent. So in addition to the expected persons of the case manager, and so by extension, the case manager supervisor, on this slide, there is the DSS legal counsel, the parents or legal guardians, there is the parent's legal counsel, there is the guardian en lightum, or GAL, who is an attorney appointed by the judge to represent the best interests of the child, and there is frequently, not always, but frequently, a CASA, which is a court-appointed special advocate, again, to promote the best interest of the children and completely independent of DSS or the GAL, and finally, the judge, who is the decision-making authority for removals, custody to decisions, civil court determinations of abuse and neglect, service plan goals, return home, et cetera. The three primary areas of the child welfare services are prevention ongoing, foster care, and child protective services. All three are governed by state code section 16.1-281B, which states the child's health and safety shall be paramount concern of the court and the agency. We examine all child welfare recommendations and case activities through that lens of the child's health and safety being priority one. Briefly, prevention and ongoing services are provided to families to achieve safe and healthy environments and avoid foster care or a return to foster care. Prevention is accessed through multiple vehicles, including self-referrals, the courts, a CPS response, et cetera. The second area is child protective services, or CPS. The agency receives over 1,100 complaints a year. Not all are investigated. Complaints are screened against the state criteria for a valid complaint. Historically, the agency accepts about 55% to 59% of complaints as meeting state criteria. The agency uses the state's structured decision-making tool, or SDM, to establish an agency response. And there are three response levels that I've shared in the past. R1, requiring meaningful contact with the alleged victim with 24 hours. R2 is 48 hours, and R3 is within five days. And the agency can respond to a valid CPS complaint as either a family assessment or as an investigation. The primary difference between a family assessment and an investigation is a family assessment will not have a finding of abuse or neglect at the end, and there are some procedural requirements, such as taping of interviews, that are not required in a family assessment but are in an investigation. Both responses start with a safety assessment. How safe is the child from immediate events of injury or harm? And both will end with a risk assessment. What is the risk to the child of further events of injury or harm? Both assessments are based upon state tools with state criteria. Both events are required to be closed in 45 days, although a CPS investigation can be extended for an allowable cause, such as waiting on a medical record or a police report, but that too must be in accordance with state allowances and must be fully documented in the case record.
Gail, again, who does, who performs these assessments? Is it your staff?
The staff are conducting the safety assessments, that's part of the response process.
And this, so this is part of your child protective staff? Is there any level of experience that they need to do this? Is it one person that does both, or two different people that do both, or a different department?
Well, the, we, we have broken out that our CPS is dedicated CPS staff, so that, that is their function, they are not distracted by other functions unless there is a critical need within the agency to share workload burden. All of our staff are, are trained in Child First, which is forensic interviewing techniques. They also have to, before they can go out in the field and respond, they also have state mandatory training events, which add up to about how many days in the first year? About 25 days in total of training. And it's, for an example of how stringent those training requirements are, right now, there is a review by the staff, by the state, across all agencies, to make sure that staff have had the minimum training to go out and respond, whether they're in family, whether they're doing foster care, whether they're doing protective services, whether they're doing prevention, because there's mandatory training, both initial and ongoing, for each type of worker. And so what the state is doing is, they have said, if you're, if it's showing in the, in the learning record, which is the state system, that they haven't completed those training, then they will lose their access to the state system of Oasis, which is the electronic record system. So in effect, they will be almost dead in the water, we won't be able to send them out on cases. We will not be one of the agencies that will not meet that standard. But it is in a way, it is in a way that the state then examines, are the staff who are going out to do the job sufficiently trained to do the job?
Would the same person do the family assessment that does the investigation?
Yes, because that's sort of part of the investigation process. Are, are you talking about the separate, yeah, the family assessment investigation? Our workers will respond to either one. Our workers will respond to either one.
Okay.
Because that's all falling under the Child Protective Services Unit.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And they don't do both at the same time. I don't want to, certainly don't want to create that. It's either, a case is either responded to as a family assessment, or it's responded to as an investigation.
Okay.
And the safety assessment is a standardized tool. It's, it's, it's an objective criteria that's established that we have to then provide evidentiary relationship to. So both respond, we have that safety assessment, we end the thing with a risk assessment, which is what is the risk to the child of further events of injury or harm? And both assessments are based on state tools, state criteria. Both events, we talked about, required closing in 45 days. So services recommended for a family involved in a family assessment are voluntary. You see on the list a safety plan under the CPS investigation. A safety plan is different from a safety assessment. A safety plan is when there are immediate conditions that, if not addressed, present significant and immediate risk to the child of further harm or injury. And if a safety plan is not agreed to by the caregiver or cannot be implemented, the agency is required to take steps to secure the child's safety, and frequently, that is when a removal occurs. So during the investigation, the agency must identify the specific category or categories of abuse or neglect that are being investigated. This has to be documented at the beginning, and at the end of an investigation, the agency is required to make a finding of founded or unfounded based upon the areas identified as being investigated. Now say, for example, a case may have been investigated for physical neglect, inadequate supervision, and inadequate shelter. The evidence of the case met criteria for inadequate shelter, but not for inadequate supervision. So the finding in that case would be founded, physical neglect, inadequate shelter, unfounded, physical neglect, inadequate supervision. So we've completed the CPS investigation, and that then can proceed on three tracks, and usually it's involving multiple tracks. The agency finding is an administrative finding. It is based upon a preponderance of evidence supporting a certain set of facts. The agency decision is appealable to the Commissioner of Social Services. A person with a founded disposition of abuse or neglect is listed in the central registry for a period of time determined by the level of finding, one, two, or three, and the database is only accessible through a search request made to the Virginia Department of Social Services. If there's a removal of the child, the agency will have to prove abuse and neglect as a civil proceeding in the juvenile court. The alleged abuser can be present and have counsel at this proceeding, and the burden of proof is on the agency, and the agency must present a preponderance of evidence to show abuse and neglect sufficient to require removal. The decision of the juvenile court can be appealed in the circuit court, and if the person is inclined to appeal further, the case will go to the Court of Appeals. This is part of the in-process checks and balances. In some cases, the Commonwealth Attorney Office may initiate criminal proceedings, and criminal proceedings require the administrative appeal process, if an appeal was filed, to be stayed. We have to suspend that process until the completion of the criminal proceedings. The locality has no discretion to stay or not stay in appeal if there are criminal proceedings. It's a requirement. Criminal proceedings may also delay the civil proceedings, as it is common practice for an appellant to request a continuance of civil proceedings until after the criminal proceedings are completed. The agency does not have a history of objecting to those continuances, because we understand the interests of the appellant are generally best served by the continuance. And criminal proceedings differ from the administrative and the civil proceedings in that the burden of proof has a higher standard of beyond reasonable doubt, as compared to the administrative and civil proceeding requirement of a preponderance of evidence. Next. Since our focus tonight is agency oversight, I wanted to give more detail on the administrative process following a CPS founded disposition. The example of a finding two slides ago was specific to a type of neglect, and that specificity is required. The agency must be clear on what is being investigated and must be clear on what the finding or end result is. This slide lists the number of categories that are in each type of abuse and neglect, and if a vent doesn't fit into a specific category, which is pretty rare, the worker can identify as other, but they must be very specific as to the actions that are being identified as abuse and neglect. The agency is also responsible for determining the level of harm or injury, or risk of harm or injury experienced by the child. And levels have very specific criteria, again, established by the state, and the case must demonstrate the connection between the experience of the victim and the level assigned. And for example, a level-one physical abuse case, the worker would have to show evidence that the worker experienced or was at imminent risk of death or near death, permanent injury or disability, or experiencing a developmental delay due to the event of abuse and neglect. Now, any CPS disposition is subject to appeal, first to the local agency, and I can understand that the persons outside DSS, this may seem odd to have the local agency hear an appeal of its own actions. But the process is per state code, and state policy is very specific as to the proceedings and criteria. The director of the local agency is not a direct part of the CPS investigation. That work is reviewed and supervised by the CPS supervisor. So during the appeal, during the appeal, the appellant presents information on why they believe the finding is either an error, or if the investigative process was not compliant with policy. The appellant can have representation at the local appeal, which is called a local conference. At the hearing, officer, it is my responsibility to evaluate the case record and information presented at the conference from all sources. I make a determination to sustain the finding, meaning that the worker made the appropriate finding and was compliant with all required elements of the investigative process, to revise the finding, meaning the abuse or neglect did occur, but the harm or injury did not meet the criteria for the level of finding, or reverse the finding, meaning the case record did not reflect a preponderance of evidence that the abuse neglect took place, or that the case record does not include documentation of all required elements of the investigation. And all of these have been an outcome at one time or another from our local conference, because we tried to make the right decision. If an appellant does not agree with the local conference results, they can appeal those results to the state. We make sure our clients know this. This appeal process is another way the state provides oversight to the agency, and almost all agency decisions are appealable, and CPS findings are in that group. The state hears the appeal, and based upon case record and information presented by the appellant, makes a decision to sustain, revise, or reverse. And if the appellant disagrees with the state decision, then they can appeal it further to the circuit court.
Ms. Crooks.
Yes, ma'am, sir.
Can you go back to that?
Sure.
Who's present at the state hearing? Are the actual accused in their state?
At the state hearing, the agency is there, agency counsel, the appellant is there with their counsel, and the hearing officer. The worker is there, and, at times, you've attended, and I'll attend.
Right. Can witnesses come to that?
Witnesses can come. This is, yes, they can call testimony. Witnesses can come to the local conference as well.
Okay.
So to give some context to our explanation, this slide reflects both the number and percentage Spotsylvania CPS activity as compared to the northern region of the Virginia Department of Social Services. And the northern region consists of 25 localities, including all of PD-16, except Caroline County, and it goes north to Fairfax and Allegheny and west to Shenandoah and Winchester. So these are aggregate numbers for FY 2015 through 2017. That number up there should read July 1, 2014, not 2015. These years were used to be consistent with information that's going to be on the next slide. So during this time, the agency received 3,539 referrals of abuse and neglect, and the region as a whole received 73,477 calls.
Gail, is the percentage slide on the left relevant for this slide or not?
Yes, the percentage is relevant.
What does the percentage stand for?
Well, that's part of what I'm going to explain as we get through. So Spotsylvania accepted and determined a complaint to be valid in 57% of the calls. So that's that first column. How many, what's the percent of the 3,539 calls? We accepted 2,017, which represented 57%. The region accepted about 36,000, which represented 49%. So we accept a higher number of calls as valid. Spotsylvania had a higher percentage of those calls, though, that were responded to as a family assessment rather than as investigation. This is reflective of our efforts to partner with families as opposed to being seen as punitive. So we also then have a higher percentage of investigations, that you will see, that end up with a founded disposition, which is 41% of our referrals, of our investigations end up with a founded disposition as compared to 33% of the regions. But I would suggest that that is because we do a quality assessment at the start to determine the most appropriate response, family assessment or investigation, and therefore, the cases least likely to result in an abuse or neglect finding have already been removed from that investigation pool, because we've addressed them as a family assessment. The higher percentage of cases being appealed, which is 20, I think worked out to 24%, as opposed to 6%, 12% as opposed to 6%, is also, I think, a good thing, because it reflects that we're communicating to the people their right to appeal, and that they feel safe to do so. So I think what happens to those appeals is what indicates the agency is doing its job and is doing its job correctly. So of the 26 appeals filed in Spotsylvania County, seven persons had outcomes that they then appealed to the state. To clarify, we're reflecting the number that are going through the administrative process, not the civil or the criminal proceedings. Of those seven, five, or 71% of them were sustained or upheld. Only one case was revised, meaning the abuse neglect was supported, but the level of finding was not, and one case was reversed. And by comparison, for the first quarter of 2018, which was the only quarter I had immediate access to for statewide numbers, the state reviewed 40 findings, sustained or upheld only 58% as compared to our 71%, and fully reversed 40%. The state does not rubber stamp local decisions. The fact that 71% of the agency's cases were sustained is a reflection of the attention to detail and the commitment to the quality work by the staff of the agency. So the state reports out the decisions on appeal, so that localities can learn from the decisions to increase policy knowledge and improve local practices. So we hear what goes on, we, the state shares what happens in all those decisions, not just the ones that came from our locality. And so the state gives this specific feedback, and I'm sharing it to demonstrate that the localities are held to a very high standard to both conduct the case and document the case in accordance with state code and state policy. Lapses in adherence to policy are reason to overturn a local decision, even if there is evidence of abuse and neglect, such as this first example reflects back on the list shared earlier that the number of specific categories within the different areas of abuse and neglect. In this one, the case record contained evidence that supported a finding of abuse, but the agency had made a finding of neglect. The local conference nor the state can change the finding to match the evidence, and since this locality had identified the wrong category, even though the abuse had occurred, the agency decision was reversed, because they had the wrong finding. The second example just emphasizes the agency cannot sustain an accusation without proof, and the third demonstrates the requirement to get to the right outcome in the right manner. Wrong manner means the right outcome gets reversed. This is a really long one, but it's just another example of the high standard of documentation required in the case record for a decision to stand up under appeal, and these were steps that were missed by the agency, or rather, may have been completed but weren't reflected in case documentation, and therefore, the agency finding was reversed. So earlier, I had referenced this part of the safety plan in addressing imminent risk to children in abuse and neglect situation. The agency has to provide factual information in establishing that the child would be subjected to imminent threat to life or health, and this is a standard we have to meet to the court, it's not just an internal standard. Without that factual evidence, the court will overrule the removal, and the child is returned to the custody of the parent. Next. There are multiple ways a child may come into agency custody. A person can file for granted or, and be granted relief of custody. Child may be involved in the courts, may be determined to be in need of supervision. Parent may become incapacitated, and there's no other means of care. But the most common entry is due to abuse and neglect. Now, this says 68 days, which would be the next, yes, sir.
Mr. Cole has a question.
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to clarify something.
Sure.
How are cases referred to you? I mean, do you have people on patrol out looking for child abuse cases, or, you know, and I know the answer to this, but I'm just asking it for public.
A call can come in from almost any source, and calls do not have to be, they do not have to give a name, but we get calls from hospitals who are mandatory reporters. We get calls from the schools, which again, are mandatory reporters. Anyone who is actually in an occupation that is heavily tied to them being in an authority role of a child, such as a coach even, is a mandatory reporter. We get calls from just the community. And then we may get calls from other agencies who are referring a CPS to us. So this timeframe saves 68 days, which is the maximum timeframe that's allowed by the agency, but it could be extended by the court at the court's discretion, and sometimes family members will ask for extensions to that process, but the agency cannot extend that process. It can be made shorter if, as long as all the steps are addressed, and the JDR in here is the Juvenile Domestic Relations Court. So within 72 hours of a removal, the agency has to present reasons for the removal to the court, and it's an ex parte, meaning that not all the parties are present. And the agency still, though, has to demonstrate that the continued placement in the home or custody of the caregiver would be contrary to the welfare of the child. And then the court determines that the evidence we're providing supports the removal, and either issues the emergency removal order, or they return custody to the parent. After that is the preliminary removal hearing, and this is attended by the parents and their counsel. The burden is still on the agency to demonstrate continued placement in the home would be contrary to the welfare of the child, and that reasonable efforts were made to prevent the removal. For example, did the agency make a good faith effort to safety plan? And more detail is required than the ERO, and the court again decides if the evidence and action support the removal, or they make a decision to return custody to the parent. Within 30 days, the case is heard again, and this time, it's an adjudicatory hearing, meaning that the agency now is establishing the burden of proof to demonstrate the court's satisfaction that the child was abused or neglected as defined by state code. This is a full hearing while all parties are present, and they can present their case to the court. If the agency does not meet the burden of proof, the court will return the child to the parent's custody. The court's decision of abuse and neglect is appealable to the circuit court per the civil proceeding tracks. Think so. A person who is found in the civil proceedings to have an event of abuse neglect, they can appeal that to the, to the next court.
Gail, do these happen if there's a criminal case? Is this still the timeline that you follow for criminal cases?
Right. Well, this is where they can be extended, and sometimes we're talking that they, the counsel for the appellant may request a continuation, and actually, I'm going to let Bob just speak to that directly, as what happens with that process.
Yes, sir. In the majority of cases, we get to the adjudicatory hearing, even if there's a criminal process, and the court makes a finding whether the child's abused or neglected. Sometimes the parents will not participate in that, because they want to assert their right not to testify, based on Fifth Amendment considerations. Sometimes the dispositional hearing will be delayed pending criminal proceedings, but that is almost always at the request of the, of the parents, who are, who wish to avail themselves of their Fifth Amendment privilege, and that rests within the discretion of the courts. I do not keep records of that in the course of my record-keeping, but I can tell you that...
So it sounds like you definitely do the 30-day, but if, if in a criminal case, you may not do the 60-day, because the parents may request a delay.
Correct.
Their attorney's probably going to recommend a delay. Okay, thank you.
And sometimes we will still have the dispositional hearing, without the parents testifying. And the, to clarify, at the dispositional hearing, everything can be appealed, so that's what will sometimes happen, is we'll go ahead with the dispositional hearing, and the parents will then appeal that, and that will tend to be delayed in the circuit court pending the outcome of the criminal proceedings. Does that answer your question?
I got a question. At what point do they actually get to give testimony, and as far as from a lawyer or themselves, that's at the adjudicatory, isn't it?
They can testify as early as the five-day hearing, the preliminary removal hearing. That's an adversary proceeding, where the parents can appear with counsel if they choose. So they can testify as early as that hearing.
But can they present evidence and stuff like that?
Yes, they can present evidence, they can present witnesses.
I know, like, I'm, from a criminal standpoint, where I come from, usually the preliminary was just a, to be honest, do you have a lawyer? Do you want a lawyer? Can you afford a lawyer? How do you plead?
Well, I...
Et cetera, like that, and there was, I don't ever remember a time where testimony was actually given.
I will not tell you that it happens frequently. It does not.
Okay, so it basically does not. It's a procedural...
It doesn't happen, but, but you asked me if they can, and the answer is yes.
Okay. But mostly, it's just a procedural step.
Normally, it's procedural, the parents are saying, I want, I want an attorney, I want you to determine if I qualify for court-appointed counsel.
So, and it's kind of hard to put together a testimony and evidence within five days of a... of a...
On both sides. It's hard for the department, and it's hard for the parents.
So primarily, it's the, it's DSS's case that is presented, and that's...
Correct.
In synopsis.
And I would say, that's why the burden of proof is on, is on the agency. And that's, and that's why there's a high standard for the evidence that is provided. It is not just because DSS says so or that we have the word. There has to be evidence that backs up the recommendation.
Well, I mean, you could, I'm just going from my law enforcement background.
Right.
I never saw anybody ever present evidence or testimony during a preliminary hearing, ever.
Well, as Bob, it's happened both ways.
Well, I'm just, let me continue, but, and it's, it's just a, a step in the process. Mostly, usually, the, the reading of the, the charges and stuff is even waived majority of times that I've ever been in front. So this is just kind of a, a process, and it bumps right along. Like I say, it's, it's hard for either, either side to really present true evidence and testimony within, on this five days. I just wanted, you know, I, so when you're going through these procedures, I mean, there's certain, certain levels of what you're able to do. It's not like they get to testify at the emergency removal hearing, they get to testify and provide evidence at the preliminary hearing. I'd say more at the, probably the adjudicatory is where they'll, somebody, a citizen, if, if they felt they're absolutely innocent, would actually provide some sort of evidence or testimony.
That is correct. Primarily, it starts with the adjudicatory hearing. I can tell you that within the last thirty days, I've had judges decline to continue the removal at the five-day hearing, just based on, on the information before the court, as inadequate as it is.
I'm not saying DSS does anything wrong. I'm just, for the common citizen, I'm sure there's that preliminary removal hearing, oh, well, they had a chance to provide all the kinds of evidence, they can have their, you know, all these stuff to show their case, and it's, like I say, I spent twenty years in it. I, I don't, I cannot remember a time during the preliminary hearing where anybody really did anything except guilty, not guilty, yes, I want a lawyer, no, I can't afford, et cetera, like that. So it was just a little step in the process. I just wanted to, that's the way I've always seen it.
So, yes, and that, so I have to explain that, and then, I, I hear what you're saying, but, and I think that's why it's important, probably for those reasons, to reflect on how often then it goes back to the court during, during the process to create better, and that allows better opportunity if someone felt that their ability to present adequate information was somehow diminished by the timeline of it. So the, at the adjudicatory, as we discussed, the agency still has the burden of proof to demonstrate the court's satisfaction the child was abused and neglected by state code. As we said, it's a full hearing. And then the next court appearance is a dispositional hearing. And this sort of completes that transition from CPS to foster care. At the dispositional hearing, the initial foster care plan is submitted, which includes the permanency goal for the child. And service plans include two goals, a primary and a secondary, and this best practice concurrent planning provides for the event that if, for some reason, the primary goal is determined at some point to be no longer in the best interest of the child, progress has already been made on an alternative goal in order to achieve permanency for the child as timely as possible. And then foster care goals are listed on the next slide. The service plan and permanency goal has to be approved by the court. If the court does not agree with the recommended plan and the goal, the court will direct the agency to revise the plan and the goal and return to the court for approval. And so if you remember the list of participants from Slide Five, the court has multiple inputs into its decision. In summary, the first sixty-eight days or thereabout following a removal, the agency is in front of the court four times, and each time, the agency must make its case from the evidence and include any new information favorable or unfavorable obtained since the last court appearance. So in developing an initial service plan, the first consideration is given to return home. And the agency's service plan attached to that goal will include activities and conditions that the agency is facilitate to the extent appropriate and possible and reasonable for the parent or family. So in the court language, it's generally reasonable efforts. But there are other goals besides return home, and the most common are listed here. You'll see the relative placement, adoption, permanent foster care if they're sixteen or over, fostering futures, and another planned permanent living arrangement. So the last slide did indicate that return home was generally first consideration. But state code allows that there are reasons when return home is not given first consideration. And these reasons are listed on Slide Twenty and Slide Twenty-One. And we'll go ahead and continue.
Gail, I do have a question on that. I actually have some other ones, too. But on Slide Twenty, this is probably a question for Bob. Says, "shall not be required." And I'm very, very familiar with the difference between shall and may. And for these reasons, though, so it's, but it seems like it says, "shall not be required," but it, it doesn't necessarily say that you can't work with the child or parent. What's the legal finding on that? Does that mean that, so the local board shall not be required by the court to make reasonable efforts to reunite the child with the parent? But does that mean you still can? I would hope we could.
Of course, part of this is driven by federal regulations.
I understand. I'm just trying to decide what that term means.
What it means is that the department is not required to make reasonable efforts. The court...
But can they?
Let, let me...
Sure. I can read it. I see what it says, but can they?
The parents, they, there would have to be some, and I'm, I'm, I'm not aware, and I'm, I'm being slow because I'm not aware of any case law that has interpreted this at this point. So there's no, there's no appellate courts that have told us what, what this means.
So I take it that you interpret it for Spotsylvania County DSS as, no, you can't work with the family?
Well, that, that decision is ultimately made by the court. Because what happens when the court...
Actually, it doesn't seem to be.
Let me...
Sure.
Because this is not on the slide. So if the court makes one of these findings, that reasonable efforts shall not be required to reunite, they, the department is required immediately to file a permanency plan. We'll be talking about permanency planning. Normally, that's twelve to fifteen months, twelve, eleven, I'm sorry, eleven to twelve months down the road, permanency planning. So there will have been approximately eleven months of services before we talk about permanency planning. If the court makes these findings, we have to present a permanency plan, and the court can look at the permanency plan. So theoretically, the court can say, okay, you're not required to make efforts to return the child to home. But the court can find, based on input from parents' counsel, guardian ad litem, CASA, that, and I'm saying this hypothetically...
Sure.
That there exists a very strong bond between the parent and the child, and that it would be harmful to the child to disestablish that bond. The court could then say, I'm not going to approve an adoption goal, I'm not going to approve a relative placement goal, I'm going to approve a goal of return home. I'm, I can't require you to make efforts, but I can permit the parents to continue to work with you and work on these, on these things.
Don't take offense. I make fun of Carl all the time, but that doesn't seem to be a clear-cut answer back to me. And I, I understand that the courts have to decide one of these things take effect, but I'll do some follow-up questions because I'm going to, my gut tells me that courts rely heavily on input from DSS in making these decisions, which I could be wrong. That's going to be a follow-up question. But I guess, and going back to the question I asked, it says, "shall not be required," but it sounds like there is an opening where DSS could still make reasonable efforts to unite the parent, even if one of these findings, they're not restricted from doing that? Or is it, is that where case law doesn't support that?
Now, I think that's an open possibility.
Okay.
That the court, that the agency could say, we don't have to, but we think we should.
But we, but we will. Okay. Okay, thank you.
So, sort of along that the agency does recommendation to the court on the goal and service plan, and, and yes, Mr. Ross, DSS input is very important in, into that case, but only to the extent what we can back up with evidence.
Let me ask, let me go back to that slide then.
Sure.
So I am looking particular at bullet number four. How often, what, what causes that finding? And does it happen often in Spotsylvania County?
How long have I been working here?
The, I think, the aggravated circumstances is...
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to, I, I started here in 2014.
Three times?
Three times in, in four years.
Can you, you, I'm not, you probably can't describe those three cases or, yeah?
No, I can't. I can tell you that the, the first one I remember involved...
Code definition.
Yeah, I'd, if you give me a second, I'll, I'll pop up, I can read you what the Virginia codes say.
No, that's okay.
Okay. But I'll be happy to provide that to you if you, if you request it. But I, to, to tell you what happened would be to reveal those cases.
Sure. Understand.
I can't do that.
Thank...
So in these cases, the most appropriate alternative permanence goal to return home would be sought, including relative placement, adoption, permanent foster care. And as I said, the agency makes a recommendation to the court on the goal and service plan, and the court makes the final decision on that goal and service plan, and the court's decision is appealable by the family. And as we've sort of highlighted, almost every decision point has an appeal process and an opportunity for an alternative position to be heard and possibly acted upon by the court. So after those first four court appearances, there is a regular schedule of hearings for the courts to continue to review and decide on the agency actions concerning a foster care case. The list ends on the slide at the second permanency planning hearing, but as long as custody continues, excuse me, continues with the agency, the agency will present to the court for review at least every six months, and the court may decide to review a case with greater frequency. And of course, the agency is responsive to the direction of the court in that manner. The last item on the list you will note is a requirement of the agency to file a petition for termination of parental rights. It doesn't mean the agency has to support the petition, or that the court is required to approve the petition. It just means the agency is required to file the petition. And so the agency supports such a petition when the conditions indicate the petition serves the best interest of the child and the health, safety of the child. So that's sort of a re, just reminding of the three areas of child welfare services. And this is still a very high-level presentation on the structure of child welfare and the oversight afforded by the agency by both the courts and the state. And I will never be before this board or any other entity and claim that we get it one hundred percent right one hundred percent of the time. But we do try, and we want to. And because we do, we welcome scrutiny, whether it be from the judges presiding over the case, whether it be the GALs and the CASAs representing the children, whether it's random sampling of cases for formal review, or a dive into the details down deep by the state in response to a constituent concern. But we also won't violate the confidentiality and integrity of our cases by entering into conversation on specific cases with persons not authorized by code or state policy to have access to our case information. That puts the agency at a disadvantage during these times of allegations and rumors, but it's a working hazard, and I'm sure it's one you're familiar with yourselves. So I hope you and the community have found this presentation to be helpful. I hope it has provided some degree of assurance that there is appropriate reviews and checks are in place, and that the agency is committed to not just the letter of the law and the policy, but to the intent and the heart of the law and policy as well. And we are happy to address any questions we can tonight or provide a future communication to the board with any additional desired information. And again, it, we, we are open to scrutiny to the fullest extent that we can open our, our doors to you, and at any time, not just now, but six months from now, a year from now.
Dr. Trump?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. You mentioned, I believe, that a criminal process would stop the clock on some of the other, the other tracks. Does that include the federal mandate about in, in foster care, fifteen out of twenty-two months requires a petition for termination of parental rights?
If you want me to take that?
I only know that it stays the appeal, so you go ahead and take the other one.
It, it does stay the appeal. I think what, what the department has to do in that case is, is document that termination can't be pursued because the matter's on appeal. So, so that's one of the exceptions. If, if we can document that termination can't actually be pursued for one reason or another, for example, a simple example, a child who is fourteen years old can object to termination of parental rights and, and stop that process. So, so what we do is document in our, in our plan that the matter's on appeal, we can't do that, and we move forward. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Have you or your staff ever found that that federally mandated time limit causes you to, I don't know, rush, or perhaps make a decision before you have all the information that you need?
I, I would have to say, no. Because i-if we feel that there are gaps in the information, or maybe there is signs of progress but not sufficient progress, we bring that to the attention of the court, and so that that information is part of the decision-making process. So if for some reason we felt that we could not file an appropriate goal, we would explain to the court the reasons why. Now, if the court agrees with what we say, then they will allow us an extension. If they find that we are deficient, then they will issue another direction.
Hypothetically speaking, if a child has health problems with which the parents have no experience and don't know how to deal, would a, would a return home plan include education or some sort of training in how to deal with those health issues? And again, hypothetically, do return home plans ever fail? Do you find that they didn't learn what they needed to learn, or, or so forth?
You know, unfortunately, yes. Which is why, you know, we do really due diligence in making sure that service plans, you know, address the conditions that brought the child into foster care to begin with. So that we are doing our best to ensure that the return home may not be to a perfect environment, but it's to a safe and healthy environment. But unfortunately, as I said, we don't get it one hundred percent right one hundred percent of the time, and a return to foster care has occurred in the past.
You mentioned that hospitals are mandatory reporting agents. If a hospital recommends a particular medical procedure, and the custodial parent honestly and sincerely believes that that procedure would be bad for their child and refuses it, is the hospital required to report to DSS? Do they have an option to report to DSS?
If, if the hospital encounters a condition that meets state criteria for abuse or potential abuse or neglect, and there's some very specific, and I'll be happy to share those definitions that are part of the manual, it's public information, then they are required to call, report a CPS concern.
And, so that would be a medical neglect case?
Possibly. We would have to, you know, that would be open to what was found when more information was gathered on site.
If, if you receive such a complaint, but the parents had a duly licensed physician who agreed with them that the procedure, whatever it is, is either not needed or would be harmful, is that exculpatory? Who, who makes the final decision if not the parents medically?
Well, certainly, if there's a medical professional involved, all information is taken into, into account before any type of determination is made.
Thank you.
Mr. Ross?
Yeah, if we could bring the floor computer back up, I had a couple of questions. I did, didn't ask everything as we were going through. If you could go to Slide Four. So on the annual basis... So on the annual basis, I was just wondering how many cases are reviewed during that week-long review? And is it, and also follow-on would be, is it reviewed for just administrative correctness or content?
It's, it's removed, boy, yeah, that's reviewed for content.
Okay.
And generally, they'll pearl anywhere from 20 to 30 cases.
So it's not on, the annual review is not on all cases, it's just on a random poll?
Correct, they're, they're random samples.
Okay, I missed that.
And, and we aren't, we aren't advised very far ahead of time of which cases they're going to pull.
Okay, so they annually review 20, about 20 cases out of how many?
Right now, we have 168. Did we get another?
Okay.
We have 168 children care.
So it's the active cases that they pull?
It's the active cases that they pull.
Okay. If we go to slide nine. So are, you mentioned training and that it would, there's minimum training requirements. And I think from past times, is your turnover rate around 50% or is it lower than that?
In the CPS function in 2017, it was 45%.
45%. And what's, do you have any kind of average experience of the DSS staff? I mean, are they there for...
The CPS supervisor has 20-plus, has 20-plus years. Our senior CP, one of, one of our senior CPS investigators has over 15.
But I'm talking about, I guess you have 50, 45% turnover. I would think you've got a lot with a little experience.
Well, we don't...
That's more turnover than the Rinkor has, and it's by design, by the way.
Well, um, we, we're not by design for that.
Sure, I know, I know.
But we don't, if we, we don't just hire newly minted CPS workers. If we can, in fact, our last hire was someone who had experience from another locality. So we will go and search out workers, and we will invite them to apply to, to our agency.
Okay. So on, on bullet two, I think when you said safety plan when needed, and then I think you said if cannot be implemented, then it calls for removal during your brief.
Generally, if, if the, if the, a safety plan is needed when there's conditions that indicate that there's imminent risk to the child of further harm.
Who drafts up the safety plan?
It's drafted up between the worker and the parents.
Okay. And if, if it's, so it's, the parents are involved in that safety plan? Or is it ever, is it a safety plan ever just given to the parents? Say there's a stressful situation that they might be under and not able to dedicate attention to it, like maybe they're...
Well, their input is sought because the safety plan isn't any good if the, if the people aren't going to follow it.
Right. How long do they have to review that plan?
It, it depends on, again, the, the conditions that are presenting for that child.
Okay. Normally, how long in a process are they able to review that plan before their baby's taken? And I, I would assume that the safety plan could take away parental rights?
No. A safety plan is not a document that can take away parental rights.
Okay.
Generally, the safety plan is what allows a child to remain in the parent's custody.
So, let me ask, so along those lines, and this kind of relates to this. So let's say that the safety plan can't be implemented and the baby or the child is removed. Are you part of that decision? Anytime a child's removed from the family, is the director or are you removed from that decision?
They have to consult with the supervisor on call.
So it's not the director?
Sometimes that's me, sometimes that's Anna, sometimes that's the CPS supervisor.
So there's three different people?
There are five different people who will be on call. We, we take turns through it.
Okay. And then after that happens, so I'm thinking back to my Rinkor days...
Let me correct that, if it's, if it, that's if it's happening after hours.
Okay.
If it's during the hours, the, the decision will come up, and it'll be reviewed at least by Anna or myself.
And if it happens during hours, is everybody notified after that decision's been made? Or is it just something that's part of the process that one of, one of the higher-level employees or of your staff or yourself look at it and that decision's made? But is that decision then reviewed by everybody, by the five of you?
I don't understand the question.
I guess I'm looking for the process. So if you, if a ba, if a child is removed from their family, and it does have to get the approval of one of the five, you know, senior workers, do the five of you review that removal later? Or is it ever reviewed by five of you? Or is that the process is reviewed by one?
It does, it sort of has to, it has to meet the criteria for removal, and sometimes we'll even call Bob.
Sure.
Even if it's in the middle of the night, to make sure that the, the department is operating within legal authorities.
So I guess I, I hear what you're saying. But so let's say that the child's removed and that, is Ms. Johnson? You make, you're, you're the one that reviewed that and decided that was okay. Is there a time later, say the next two or three days, that all five of you get together and review that removal?
No.
Or is that not part of the process?
That's not part of the process.
Okay.
But, I mean, correct.
It does go back...
Obviously, any removal is then where it's in front of the, the judge within 72 hours.
Sure.
And of course, and at the five day. And so if, if the parameter's not... No, because what guides a removal is the legal statute.
Gotcha. It's following into my, my football soccer example, but I'm not there yet. And I apologize to my other board members, so... On slide 19. For relative placement or adoption, what's the normal timeline for that process to happen? So, or is, I'm sure, is it different for both?
It, they are different timelines, and actually, I'm gonna, Anna, I'm gonna punt that one. One minute to you, or you're gonna point to Bob? Again, so many of these things are dictated by, by law.
You know, I, I, normal timeline is a difficult term, but let me say this. The ideal, you know, drafted for us and given to us by the General Assembly is that within 12 months, we're supposed to have achieved a permanent goal, whether it's relative placement, adoption, return home, permanent foster care.
How many months?
12 months. Now, that normally can't happen for a number of reasons. Relative placement often involves out-of-state relatives. And we have to go through a process called the Interstate Compact on the Placement of Children. So that never...
It's okay, I was just, if there's no standard guideline, it sounds like there's no real answer.
There is a guideline. The guideline is 12 months.
Gotcha, okay.
But there are multiple factors that can affect that guideline.
Sure, I understand. All right, you can take the floor computer off. So I, I'm bringing up an example. I have, I have six children, and I got some that play football, some that play soccer, and some that swim. And I really like the swimming event because, and when you compare a subjective thought of like, hey, is your, your son good enough to play football? It's kind of subjective. Where swimming, they have a time, it's very objective, right? You can't say, hey, let's put, let's put Tim McGlaughlin in to swim because his time's five seconds slower than Dave Ross's, right? It's very clear what our, what our times are. And I would think, you know, I read an article about Ben Rassenberg. Are they, any Pittsburgh Steeler fans here? Yep, there's one, one of the... So I found out that Ben didn't play high school football as a quarterback until his senior year. Did you know why? Anybody, well, the reason he didn't, maybe, and he had a great senior year. He played quarterback before that, he was a wide receiver because the coach's son was the quarterback, and he was a year ahead of Ben. So Ben never ended up playing football as a quarterback until his senior year, and he had an outstanding senior year. And I guess I bring that up because, and Gail, you said it. When you're handling cases, they're subjective. And I think every, one of your, one of your employees has a different background. For instance, some could be raised by their mother, some could be raised by two parents, some could be raised by just their dad, or some could have been from an alcoholic family, or some could have not, just like all of us. And that, you know, with my friends that I've grown up to know, that, that impacts the way they see life and impacts how they do decisions. And, and so with that, that's a long-winded way of saying, is there anything in a process or policy that you guys have to standardize those very subjective decisions that your staff is making?
Yes.
What is that?
That is that the state defines abuse neglect very specifically on what has to occur, what has to be observed, what documentation has to be in place. Such as, for example, the one that comes quickly to mind actually is mental abuse, which you have to have a medical professional who will tie, provide the nexus between the actions of the alleged abuser neglecter and then the manifestations of that abuse that are being witnessed in the child. And there has to be specific things that they are looking for. So I asked her to turn to our manual, such as it specifies bone fracture, okay? A small piece of bone is flaked from the major part of the bone, simple fracture. The bone is broken, but there is no external wound. Let me get to one that's a little bit more ambiguous. When we talk about cuts, bruises, welts, and abrasions. So someone, a child making an allegation that a caregiver is, grabs him or shakes him or beats him or something like that, there has to be evidence of that happening generally beyond the child's testimony. So the bruise is any injury that results from bleeding within the skin where the skin is discolored but not broken. They describe a welt, they describe abrasions, they talk about internal... So it, it gets very detailed on what qualifies.
I see what you're saying, but there still seems to be a subjective measure. In other words, you could get a bruise if you're a child and you could be too young to talk by getting into your vehicle and hitting an armrest if you repeatedly got in that vehicle the same way. So then it would be a subjective decision about one of your employees as to where the bruise came from.
Well, in that, that we would have to, to make a finding, we'd have to then have evidence. So, such as if, and, and the injuries have to occur through non-accidental meets. So if, in your example, the child climbs into the bruise and always sits down really hard, something like that, generally, what would happen is, if that was the explanation that the parents gave, and there was no contradictory evidence that reached not to believe them, what you would do is just, you know, generally, the worker will just have a conversation about, hey, maybe here's a better process on how you can help your child get in the car seat to minimize the risk for that. And that's where it ends.
Well, I'm sure there's cases where that's the excuse of the family and it really is a bruise. So how do you, your, your workers are gonna have to make that subjective decision as to are the parents telling the truth, are they not telling the truth? So I still, I, I see you're trying to say there's, I, I don't think you're saying there's no subjectivity to it.
No, I'm, I'm not saying there's no subjectivity because I don't believe there's no subjectivity to almost anything that they do.
And I would think that if you got one caseworker, they could find abuse, and another one might say, no, it's not.
Well, except that there is still the thing that they have to provide the evidence. So if a worker came to me, and, and as part, and, and we do this as, as part of that local conference when we have had a worker will say they had certain amounts of bruising. And it's like, okay, how did you establish that the bruising occurred through an event of abuse or neglect? And the explanation has to be factual. And then you have to establish the credibility. If this testimony's come from the, the child, you have to establish the credibility of the witness. And so then you have to go out and make sure your investigation includes interviews with other collaterals to determine the credibility of, of those, of those statements. So...
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I understand that in order to do a criminal case, there's two sheriff's deputies that work on, with DSS on criminal cases. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's more.
More than that?
But generally, there used to be two primary signs, and I'm not keeping, Anna's much more familiar with the actual relationships between the working...
So again, going back to the, so how does, does, is there a time when your staff would meet alone with those deputies to talk about a case before it would go before the, the court system, to go before the Commonwealth attorney?
Well, the, the team does meet weekly, the, the multidisciplinary team.
Okay.
That is the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, representatives, law enforcement, and our staff to discuss progress of, of cases.
What about cases that haven't come to them before? So, or does that, does it work that way? Does it have to have, there has to be a case?
She's our representative on the supervisor for MDT.
So there are certain cases where we're required to respond jointly with law enforcement. And so from the outset of that case, from the initial complaint through the life of the case, law enforcement and the department would work together on that case.
And then together you present to the judge? Or together you decide whether it needs to go to the judge, or how does that work?
The decision on, on removal rests with the department. Law enforcement...
Criminal proceedings rest with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office.
Right.
So but for criminal cases, it would have...
That rests with law enforcement.
And then, so do you work collaboratively, I mean, together with them? In bringing that forward alone? Or is that something that you independently review, or how does that work?
The, the, the investigation is joint. The law enforcement and the DSS workers work together jointly. But the DSS workers don't get to decide who gets prosecuted and who doesn't get prosecuted.
Sure, that's the judge, or that's the Commonwealth attorney.
It's the Commonwealth attorney with, with the, so, so I just want to clarify that...
So the Commonwealth attorney takes the input from the sheriff's department deputies that work specifically and full-time with DSS?
And the information that they receive from the DSS investigation.
So I would think...
They look at that investigation, that's a part of their case. But DSS does not make decisions about whether or not prosecutions are initiated.
But their input would heavily impact that, one way or the other.
Well, I'm, I'll let this...
I, I, I think that would almost be an assumption on their part, or, or on a part that all we can do is present the information. Again, everything we present has, has, has to be fact-based. And by that, not just that we state it as a fact, but we've got evidence that supports it as a fact. And then again, the, the decision does rest with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. I just want to clarify that not all, not every CPS investigation is a joint investigation. Those elements that appear may involve to rise to the level of criminal abuse or neglect is when law enforcement is involved. As we said, there is a civil and an administrative procedure, so not all cases involve law enforcement.
Gotcha. What's the meaning of administrative finding found at level one?
Okay, so there are three different levels of a finding. There's level one, which is the most significant. And could you go to, I can't tell you what slide it is. There is level one, which is the most significant, level two, which speaks to moderate harm. It's slide 11. And level three, which speaks to minimal harm or risk of harm. And so depending, and those are very specific criteria on what a event has to include or indicate that there is a reasonable risk of in order to be as a level one, level two, or level three.
Who, who makes that decision?
Well, the decision is made at the disposition by the agency worker, but it's against the state criteria. And the decision on a finding, I'm sorry, I'm still, I have bronchitis. The decision on the find, before it's made final, is then also reviewed by the CPS supervisor.
So one of the five that we talked about?
No, that actually is reviewed by the CPS supervisor. Though, I mean, she may, if there's a question on it, she may consult with Anna or she may consult with myself. But that, that finding, when it's issued, is, is reviewed by the supervisor and approved by the supervisor.
Hypothetically, would it be possible to have a level one finding on medical neglect if there's already a baby in the, if, if there's a child in the hospital?
Yes.
Yep, okay. I think we already talked about aggravated circumstances and timelines. Let's see here. So, again, I talked about that, that potential, that, that subject. Who, who has oversight? Is it you that has oversight over investigations? We talked about the...
Do you mean day-to-day?
Day-to-day.
Okay. No, the day-to-day oversight of the investigative and family assessment activity would rest with the CPS supervisor. She reports to Anna. And there is a lot of, of interaction just between those levels because things do happen quickly. And so you want to make sure that correct procedure's being processed, that there is appropriate notifications being made, and that we get to that, the most appropriate decision based on the information that we have.
Okay. Are your employees, do they, within that training, do they have training on medical complications? Where they can, so that they can tell whether there's abuse versus a, a real medical issue?
Well, that is, that's following the recommendation of a medical professional. They, they are not qualified, nor do they make any decision on whether a child has a specific medical...
So they consult with medical professionals?
Yes.
Okay. And any, any time when we were talking about a child being removed, that, that is a decision that's made by the caseworker and reviewed by one of the five, and that would always happen without the court being involved, but then the court's involved five days later, right?
Well, there are cases... Well, there are cases when a removal occurs that we go for that removal order prior to the removal actually happening. What drives the immediacy of a removal is, again, the imminent risk to the child.
Okay.
I think Anna wants to add to that.
Just to clarify, the worker doesn't actually make the decision for removal. That has to be made by the supervisor.
Okay.
They call it in.
Sure. I'll do just one last one here. When is reunification of parent and child not advisable?
Well, it goes through those different criteria that were listed before. Sometimes there are certain barrier crimes or barrier events, but each case is different. And that's where I really couldn't give you a cookie cutter answer, except in the most obvious where, where the child, where the parent was an active abuser and showed every indication that that would continue. Or if, you know, there is no way, what we're having difficulty right now, of course, is if there's substantial substance abuse in the homes. And so we, we just can't get to the home to be where it's a safe and an appropriate environment to return a child to. But there are multiple reasons why it would not be. But we work very hard to address those concerns so that we can create that safe and healthy environment to eventually return that child home.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Just a couple of questions. I think you mentioned about a forty-five, forty-five percent turnover of CPS workers. What trainings required to be hired?
Well, state code requires that any family services worker have a human services degree or that they have a four-year degree plus one year, two years, two, two years related experience in the human services field.
So they're all college graduates with potentially additional training?
Right. And then after they're required, before they actually go into the field in their area of assignment, they have to meet minimum state requirements for training that the state provides.
Is that the twenty-five days a year?
Right. There'll be, it's a lot, some of it's online, a lot of it is in classroom. And then we also look for, and to sort of speak to Mr. Ross's question about the medical diagnosis, we wouldn't go that far. But we do send staff to trainings that help them do better work in the field, such as there's a training on how to identify injuries. And so that would be something that we send staff to.
So last one, I just, so if we make a mistake, are we financially liable? Can we be sued if we make a mistake?
Bob?
I'm going to defer in part to the county attorney, but let me, let me say this. And I've said this, I've been representing boards and agencies since 1983. People can always sue you. Anybody can sue you anytime.
I understand. Are we liable if we make a mistake?
The, the, the liable, the case law that's out there, what's the case out of Wisconsin?
Hold on a minute, Carl.
Yeah.
Are we liable?
Speaking from instances that I'm most familiar with, obviously, you know, Bob is, you know, hired specifically to be our social services expert. But speaking, you know, in matters such as prosecution, matters where there's, somebody gets sued for malicious prosecution or something to that effect, generally speaking, you know, the organization as a whole does have some immunity, you know, sovereign immunity like localities have. Additionally, you know, when it gets to suing somebody for, you know, malicious prosecution, the bar is extremely high. The burden of proof is extremely high because there's a lot of discretion given to the calls that are made by the prosecutor in that, in that context. There's also prosecutorial immunity as well. In addition to the organization having sovereign immunity, the individual has prosecutorial immunity. And again, that's, that's designed as a matter of public policy to, you know, allow people to, you know, work in those jobs and give their best efforts without the worry of, oh my gosh, am I making the right call? It's generally understood that, you know, most people are going to, you know, give their best efforts.
And I agree. I just want to make, so unfortunately, it sounds like there's really no recourse if we make a mistake. Is that what you're saying? There's no recourse?
There, there is the appeal process.
But, but, but to take the organization to court in a civil case for a mistake?
The liability's extremely slim.
But it can be done, I guess.
Well, let me say this, the lead case is DeShaney versus Winnebago County Department of Social Services, a United States Supreme Court case, in which the Supreme Court said, that was a case where they failed to remove a child. And the Supreme Court said they're not liable. I've been, as I told you, I've been doing this for thirty years plus. I've had one lawsuit filed against a constituency. It's a reported case in the Fourth Circuit, Wolf versus Falkir County. And it says that under the Virginia statutory scheme, where the, the risk of a false positive far outweighs the harm of a false negative, and we will not impose liability. There, in that case, involves sovereign immunity, involved prosecutorial immunity, involved all those issues. And the Fourth Circuit said, no, you don't, you don't have a claim here, even if there was a mistake made. And there was, and there, I'll say this, there wasn't, there wasn't a finding that there was.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, it seems interesting because I thought we had a jury at twelve and had to be unanimous. And it sounds like it's eh, maybe. Okay, that's fine.
Anybody else? I just got the, I think it's kind of obvious why you, why we're all coming together here today, seeing how last week and now this week, we have a lot of comments. And I just, I guess one of my questions would be, just so maybe the citizens out there watching can have some clarification. The criminal case in this, let's say, I'll make it vague. A criminal case is dismissed or the folks are found not guilty. Why then would the agency pursue civil? You know, it's like somebody commits a homicide. Well, the suspected of homicide found not guilty, but then the family members can then take it to civil court where it's a lower, lower indicative indication of, you know, preponderance of evidence that you need to actually find guilt.
I'm going to go into a bad place here, but most of us remember the criminal prosecution against Orenthal James Simpson, which he was found not guilty.
Yep.
And the civil suit against Mr. Simpson, in which he was found liable and had to pay.
But those are individ, you know, these are family members that decide to take it a little further and to, you know, this is an agency, a department. Why would an agency, after a criminal matters like that of no guilt is found, why would they pursue then a civil?
I, I'm not going to talk about any pending cases.
I'm, I'm not asking you to. I'm just saying.
What I will say is that a criminal prosecution involves certain elements that have to be proven by a beyond a reasonable doubt. A civil abuse and neglect case has different elements, different facts that need to be proved, and a different burden of proof. Again, I think our first slide and our last slide in this say that the health and safety of the child is paramount consideration in our case management.
I understand. So let me just, I'll just, maybe, let me put some words in your mouth then. Or question. Then as an agency, you are the custodial parent per se of the child. And then, so you're going to proceed as an agency in the best, you know, for the best of the child?
This is an adversarial.
Is that what you're doing?
It's an adversarial process. That's the way the General Assembly designed it. We have to take an advocacy position on behalf of the child.
Okay.
And, and.
Okay, let me ask, do you have to pursue a civil matter when a criminal matter's been found, been disposed of?
I, I don't think we have to unless we've, but again, there's no law that says we have to pursue the case. But there are different. Yeah. But, but again, we're not in a position to overturn what the court has done.
I understand that, but you have a court that has found whatever the case has determined not, no guilt. They've dismissed it, they've quashed it.
A foster care case is still an active case in the Juvenile Domestic Relations Court. So a decision in the circuit court does not necessarily translate to the Juvenile and Domestic Relations Court.
Okay, what weight is given to that verdict or the no guilt finding in circuit court?
It's a case-by-case basis. But I, all I can say is that a finding that a parent is not criminally guilty of a crime against a child is not a finding that a parent has not abused or neglected the child. They're two different things.
Mr. Ross?
So I understand what you said about the preponderance of evidence being lesser in the civil case. But my question, I guess you did say that you wouldn't have to pursue it. How, if, hypothetically, if DSS would say, we're not going to pursue it, the civil case, how would that, what's the process that that would happen for that? I mean, who makes that call? Who initiates that? Is it something that, if DSS says, you know, this isn't relevant anymore? For instance, the question that has come to my mind, it's a follow-on to that, is what if you had a drug abusing mother and that mother was, the child was removed because that mother was addicted to several kinds of drugs? And the mother just had the criminal case, let's say it was thrown out, but she's been clean and drug tested every day hypothetically for the last fourteen months, and it's no longer a drug issue? When does the fact that the issue that the child was removed in the first place become irrelevant?
When the child's health and safety is not deemed to be at issue.
And is DSS able to make that decision, say in this hypothetical drug-using mother case? Who makes that decision and how would it be initiated?
The, the agency would file a plan with the court saying, here's what mom has done in the meantime.
Okay.
She's had twelve months of clean drug screens. She's completed her counseling. She's done these things. She's come forward and said, I was a drug addict. I needed help. I was wrong. Now I've turned my life around. That's a different situation.
And who initiates that process in this case? Would it be DSS?
It could be DSS. It could be the guardian ad litem. It could be the parent's attorney.
And?
The CASA could bring that up.
Hypothetically, with, we're going back to that aggravated circumstances where it says shall not be required. Would this be something that DSS could do even with an aggravated, now that that, is the aggravated circumstance is just a criminal charge? Or is it also a civil?
It's a civil.
So the aggravated circumstance, if, if there was a criminal charge, it's gone away?
No.
It's not gone away.
It's not gone away. No.
That, that one finding is in the Juvenile Domestic Relations Court.
I, I guess, I guess how, how does that drug-addicted mother that's clean for twelve months, if she was found with aggravated circumstances, even get the information to DSS if DSS is not going to work with them, with that mother? I mean, so then the, the DSS can't even make that?
Mr. Ross, there is never an, an event where, when the case presents itself, that we are not working with our families within the foster care. That, that family engagement is a practice principle that is heavily, heavily.
I, I've seen an email from DSS say, we're not going to work with a family because of that finding, that we need to talk lawyer to lawyer. I, I've seen that. So I'm sorry. I, I don't know what to say because I've seen an email from DSS that says, I'm not going to work with this family. You need to get your lawyer to talk to our lawyer because of an aggravated circumstances finding.
Well, certainly, if you would like to share that specific email, I will try and respond to it as best I can without, again.
Sure.
Going into specific details of a case. But we'll certainly look at that and try and give you a response to that.
I guess we're at a catch-and-22 the way I see it because it sounds like in the drug-using mother example, that DSS can say, well, you know, the, the original reason is no longer there. But if you're not, if DSS uses the aggravated circumstances, which is still there, to not work with the family, then you're not going to get that information or you'd be, you'd be able to talk with the family about it. So I don't know.
Well, that condition doesn't, I can't think of a condition in, in any active case right now where that actually exists. So certainly, I'll be happy to respond to the best that I can within the parameters that code allows me to respond to any question or concern that any board member has.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Skinner?
Just one thing. I've been listening to this and I'm thinking, okay, you have the criminal court found not guilty, and then you pursue it in a civil court because you're basing it on the risk of the child, I would think. That's why you would continue this, even though they couldn't prove intent to hurt the child or negligence and stuff of this nature. You as a DSS would decide that the risk hasn't changed coming out of the criminal court, which was dismissed or struck, I think the word was in the case. But we can follow it up on a civil court because they're concerned, and I think the whole bottom line is, it's all about the child. It should be the risk of harm to the child, and that's why you might pursue it in a civil court. Is that fair to say?
The health and safety of the child is always the priority one of, of the child welfare operations. Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Akabowski?
Thank you. And thank you for coming here this evening and, and sharing in very, very much detail the, the steps and the procedures that happen. This is not an issue, and I think I've, I've said to you many years, this is something that breaks my heart when you have to deal with these issues. And, and I honestly couldn't do it. So turnover, I understand. It's just, it's, it's something that needs to be done. And, and I really do appreciate those who, who do do it and all the oversight that is there. And I do appreciate the people that have come out this evening for a specific case, which I will not discuss, you know, at all. But I do want to say something because I, I find it very frustrating, sitting here this time and sitting here previous times. There is a procedure of reviews, and you have laid that out. And the board, I noticed that wasn't part of that, is this board. As much as we would like to help and as much as we could help on an individual level, which if you want to, that's fine, please go right ahead. I'm not going to stop any of that whatsoever. And as I said, I, I do know people that are here and I've known them for many years. And, and I would encourage them to go through the, the avenues that are available for every type of review that is necessary, not just them, but anybody else, just to make sure that, that the checks and balances are being followed. But I had heard from some folks earlier about us exercising our power to do something. We don't have any power. We honestly don't. We can bring things to light. We can, you know, go and advocate on, on behalf of somebody. We can talk to them and try to find them the correct avenue. But as a board, we have no oversight. And that's the way the General Assembly has set it up. And again, and I don't want to sound condescending whatsoever, but our state is a Dillon Rule state. So all power derives from the state government down to us as entities of the state government. And if we don't have that specific enumerated power to do something, we can't do it as much as we would like to. But directing people to the correct path, and let me give you an example. I had a phone call from a lady multiple, multiple, multiple times. And, and those are just the voicemails in a day, over and over and over and over. And she was complaining that nobody was answering my office phone, which every board member up here will tell you, we don't have offices. We don't have assistants. We basically have a cell phone and an iPad, and that's all that we have. So we don't have caseworkers working anything that we do. We turn it over to, to the correct staff and we point them in the right direction. But she was concerned about her, her social security benefits. And again, way, way above what I do, but I was able to direct her to the correct person, in fact, I think it was Brad's office, to get the answers that she needed and to go through the, the correct path that is available to get the situation resolved. And I say all that not to say that I don't want to listen because I absolutely do, and I, I invite everybody to come forward and, and whether it's this issue that lots of people have come forward on, pardon me, or, or others. You have three minutes up there as, as everybody else does. I know it goes by fast. I have unlimited time. But please come forward and state that. But please understand from me, and I'm not going to speak for the rest of the board, we, we don't have that power. We, but I will very much like to help in any way that we. in any way that we do have that ability to do something, but anything that is going to be said later, just please understand that as, as we go along, but there are checks and balances, and I hope that those are taken advantage of.
Can I follow up with that with something, Mr. Yakubowski?
Yes, thank you.
One thing, I was, the state has established a constituent concern office, I think it's about a year old, I'm not sure, and unfortunately I don't have the number for it, but I think it may be on the website, but that is an office that's been established in the Virginia Department of Social Services specifically to, so that they can receive constituent concerns and at one place, so that then those can get directed to the most appropriate member of the, of the Virginia Department of Social Services, whether it's a, a foster care concern or a CPS or maybe a Medicaid or, you know, public assistance concern. So, there is that office that's there that will receive constituent concerns, and like I said, they have the ability to, to discuss with us the cases that we can't otherwise discuss. So, that is another opportunity, and I'm, I'm sorry I don't have the number for that tonight, I was just advised of, of that office today.
When you get that number, can you please share it with the board?
Certainly.
Because I would like to send it out and also have it handy for anybody that might need, might need that. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'll just have a quick comment. I want to appreciate everything you do, goes along with our, every department and sheriff's office, Commonwealth attorney, I mean, I think we all strive to do the right things and to follow procedure and just serve our community to the best that we possibly can. And, you know, but I think it, and this is nothing critical of any, I'm just saying that we all have to step back at times and look at our actions and our decisions, procedure, and always be, and I'm sure you do, Gail, so, I'm not, and, you know, I'm, I'm positive of that, but review how, you know, what's, what's the cause and effect, you know, for bringing in so many foster kids or too few foster kids, I mean, it's, it goes both directions. I know you'd love to have a lot less, but.
Only if it was too few for the right reason.
Right. And that's, I mean, but you always got to look at those, those numbers, and I hate to say it like that, but you, and, and try to, try to figure out the cause, and I'm sure you do. And in law enforcement, you know, I can, I can speak of that more so than anything, but, you know, it is easy for, you know, my job when I was in law enforcement, the way I looked at it was, you know, to find innocence just as much as guilt. So, I dug to find, you know, I went both directions with, with whatever facts and information I got, and, but it is easy and I, I got to say, I was, I'm probably guilty of it myself, where at times you, you do get a tunnel vision, and we just always have to, to be able to step back and look and take others' opinions and advice on the cases, which, in your case, and Commonwealth attorney, I mean, you have so many things involved that should be happening, and I don't, I don't question that. And I just, I just, this comes back to, I appreciate what you do, it's not a, you don't get the thanks, just like in law enforcement, there's not a whole lot of thanks in it. And there's, you know, people don't appreciate it till they're, I guess, till a child is, is actually protected and, and things put in, you know, services put in, put in place for that child or adult, however it works. And I just want to thank you. Appreciate you coming before us today and trying to explain some of the, the processes. And, you know, just thank you.
Welcome.
I guess we have some informational matters.
Mr. Chairman, in view of the hour, we closed?
I'm just.
Sorry about that.
Just wanted to make sure that we were, we were closed.
As far as I know, we're done.
All right. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you this evening.
Thank you very much, folks. Yes, it's, I need to go back to pick up 6:30 public presentations, please give the staff a moment. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Yakubowski.
Thank you. Our staff was able to look up the phone number for the Child Welfare Complaint Office, and, and I do have that, and I'll post on my, my social media also, but if anybody needs it, it's 804-726-7011, and what I'll do is I'll, I'll leave it up there by the door, so as people are going out, if you would like to copy down the number, it'll be there for you.
You mind reading that one more time?
Sure, it's 804-726-7011. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, sir.
All right. You want to read the?
Run through the guidelines again, Mr. Chairman. Public presentations are an opportunity for citizens to present matters that you believe deserve the board's attention. These presentations are not part of a public hearing. Sign up for, to speak at each public hearing is separate. Public presentations are one-way comments from citizens to the Board of Supervisors. This is not a forum for dialogue or debate. To make a public presentation, please sign up on the sign-up sheet for public presentations and please sign, print clearly. Come to the lectern when your name is called. Clearly state your name and your voting district for our record. Address your comments directly to the board. State whether you're speaking on your own behalf, in which case you'll have three minutes to speak, or on behalf of a recognized group, in which case you'll have five minutes to speak. Public presentations shall not be used to, to address matters subject to public hearings or to make political campaign speeches, private advertisements, or personal attacks. Your written comments are always welcome. There is a lighted timer on the podium. Green means go. The yellow light means you have 30 seconds to sum up, and when the light turns red, the microphone goes off. Amy, who's signed up?
The first speaker is Sherri Carter, followed by John Buckley.
I am Sherri Carter, Berkeley District, and I'm here on behalf of the Buckley family. It's, their case is a part of our church family, and we thank you for your time to listen, and we're asking for your help, your help. Ms. Buckley, about two years ago, gave birth into Juan Antonio, and shortly after that, he became seriously ill, and her and her husband and family pursued every medical avenue that they could pursue to try to make their son well, as all of us would have done. But DSS, while Ms. Buckley and Mr. Buckley had Juan Antonio in the hospital, they came and they decided that there was criminal neglect on the family's part, and so they withdrew Juan Antonio from the house and filed criminal charges against him. Now, the criminal court has heard, the prosecutions presented their case of what DSS had against the Buckley family, and they were found completely innocent of all charges. But yet, Juan Antonio is still in foster care, he's not being brought home because that is a separate case, as she presented here, and we've all heard a lengthy display of how DSS functions and operates, and we've also seen, you know, their percentage of accuracy and how well that they do, but in this case, there has been an error on their part, because it's like the Buckley family has been found innocent, but they're still treated as they're guilty because their son is still not in their home. Now, Mr. Buckley, he is in the service, supporting and risking his life for the freedom that we have here to meet together, and yet, while he's defending his country, his youngest son was taken out of his family. And we're just here to ask you to please help in any way you can to restore what is broken. Thank you.
John Buckley, followed by Alma Buckley.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors. Mr. Yakubowski, I've called that number before, they refer you back to the local agency. So, it's a loop-de-loop, right? So, you bring that up, but you go back to the same agency that took my son. So, what's, what's good in that if they're not going to do whatever they're going to do? And all the reviews that she talked about, those are all paper reviews. We have never been once interviewed by any of those entities that she talked about. Anyways, I am from the Cortlandt District, I want my son home now. The Spotsylvania Department of Social Services took custody of my now, then 10-month-old son on 28 December 2016 while he was already in the hospital getting care. We have eight other wonderful children ranging from four to 22 years old. Within days of taking him, we invited DSS to our house, to our house, to interview all eight of our children. They found nothing. They interviewed all our children, they walked around our house and found nothing. Can you imagine my five-year-old Jewel being asked God knows what? They found nothing. They wa, they found nothing. We provided all other children's medical information, they found nothing. We cooperated with DSS to the fullest extent possible, but still, they found the unction to put aggravated circumstances on our case, which you heard Mr. Beard say they've had three in four years, so that means two other cases besides ours. And that's have been making it difficult for DSS to reunify the family, our child, back to us. They aggressively pushed for aggravated, aggravated circumstances. And finally, they charged us criminally, they found us Level 1, which is the, you know, I can't coach my kid's soccer game again. Some database that DSS has inputs John Buckley, my social screen number, now I can't coach my kid's soccer again. Why? Why does medical neglect have anything to do with me coaching soccer? Because they wanted to tear our family of 11 apart. They had no intention of returning him, and they had no intention of working with us. While sexual, drug, physical abusers, as well as parents that just recently got out of prison, have been afforded more opportunities than we have. Why? How do I know all this? Because I went to classes with all these people, they told me their story. I went to these classes on my own accord, and they told me why they were there. They got more chances than I ever had.
Mr. Buckley, I'm sorry, but your time has expired, sir.
Alma Buckley, followed by Jasmine Buckley.
My name is Alma Buckley, I'm part of the Cortlandt District. 23 years ago, I made a commitment to the military. I have dedicated my life to homeschooling my children and supporting my husband in his military career. I have put the same dedication to the care of our children. Juan Antonio was removed from my care without cause when he needed me the most. I have spoken here before, and you have heard the story. DSS did not do what was in the best interest of my infant son's health needs at the time. Three weeks went by before we were ever allowed to see him, we were not giving any medical updates. That is not an organization that is doing what is in the best interest of children. Why, why leave him in the hospital alone? Why have his parents, his family wondering, "How is he doing? What is the next medical care treatment that he is receiving?" DSS refuses the doctor's recommendations, once we are allowed to visit him, that, "Hey, Juan Antonio is happier, he is responding well to treatments after he has been with his family. Why don't you allow them to come more frequently?" DSS said, "No, no, we're not going to have it." Why? What is wrong with that? We are in a military facility, you cannot get any safer than that. Gail Crooks, you heard her speak, Lorraine Hall, Regina Johnson, Anna Johnson was present as well, all these women have worked, have refused to work with us in any effort to get custody of Juan Antonio. They have tactfully put every roadblock accessible to them in order to keep Juan Antonio from being returned home. Currently, I face the worst possible administrative finding, a Level 1 on May 31st. DSS has determined that I am fit to parent eight children, but I am not fit to parent Juan Antonio. DSS has truly misjudged the situation, there is a break in communication that has occurred between them and my family. They are in disagreement about the medical treatment that we sought for him, and as a parent, I believe I have that right to choose the care that my children need. I have completed numerous courses, counseling sessions, psychiatric evaluations, all on my own account. DSS is not asking me to do anything because there is no intention to give him back. Recently, I spoke with our social worker, and her, she confirmed, "He is not coming home. You are my next chain of command. You can influence others to make change if you cannot do it yourself." Thank you.
Jasmine Buckley, followed by Erin Buckley.
Good evening, my name is Jasmine Buckley, and I'm from the Cortlandt District. I am the eldest child of John and Alma Buckley. What has happened to my family is nothing short of a nightmare. I don't understand how parents on drugs and who actually physically hurt their children or afforded multiple chances to be reunited with their children, but my parents are not afforded at least one chance. Shortly after Juan was taken from us, I filed for custody through the JDR. I made other living arrangements and was preparing to meet with DSS to conduct a home study. I was contacted by CPS investigator Lorraine Hall, and basically she told me that she understood I had filed for custody of Juan and that we should meet to see if there was anything the department could do to assist me. When I arrived for this meeting, it was anything but to assist me. I was interrogated and asked ridiculous questions such as, "Was I actually Juan Antonio's mother?" And, "Did I love Juan more than my other siblings?" From this meeting, it was very apparent to me that the investigator actually had no desire to help me get custody of Juan, but was actually trying to gather information that she could potentially use against my parents. My parents love us, they want the absolute best for us and would never do anything to hurt any of us. They have raised us to be educated, kind, caring, and respectful individuals. DSS refuses to work with us, but my parents have done everything in their power to try and demonstrate to DSS on several occasions that they are more than willing to work with DSS in ensuring Juan Antonio can come home. But rather than admit they are wrong, DSS still continues to hide behind the judge's decision. But the judge makes his decision based on the evidence that DSS is feeding them. He doesn't just make a decision without considering the facts. This has gone on for far too long, and it's time for Juan Antonio to come home and for Spotsia DSS to be held accountable for what they are doing, and that is tearing my family apart. Juan Antonio needs to be home with us where he can be loved and cared for, where he was loved and cared for before he was taken away. Thank you.
Erin Buckley, followed by Joy, Aurelia, and Jewel Buckley.
Hi, my name is Erin Buckley, and I'm from the Cortlandt District. I'm 15 years old and one of nine children, as many people have said. This past year has been a struggle. My youngest sibling, Juan Antonio, was taken away from me and my family, close to two years now, two years, and me and my family have to continue with our lives without him. We get to see Juan Antonio once a week for a couple of hours, and I haven't seen him since April 11th because I, like I said, have to continue with my life. I have school, I have to go to school, I have to do my homework, I have to do different things, but life still goes on. But I miss Juan Antonio, my family misses Juan Antonio, everyone in my church misses Juan Antonio. We care so much about Juan Antonio, he is our family, he is our brother, he's a part of us, but like I said, but one person will never, sorry, sorry. Every day, we slip from his memory, all of us, because we're not there with him. I mean, we're not always with him now, like, he's starting to remember different people or in new themes, not us, but there's one person. But there's one person, and one person only, that will not slip away from his memory, and that's my mom. Because a mother and her child is an unbreakable bond. And if you want to break that bond, DSS, I just want you to see the pain you're going to cause me, my family, our friends. It'll be ridiculous. It'll be ridiculous. I, myself personally, have researched some cases in Spotsylvania, where parents were found guilty of abusing their child and were not given aggravated circumstances, but were instead given a second child, a second chance, and their child back. But my parents, who were not found guilty of abusing child, were given aggravated circumstances. And they would never abuse us. They nurture and care for us like loving parents should. My mom always cared for Juan Antonio, just like the rest of her eight other children. And I'm the fourth oldest, and Juan Antonio's the youngest. And she cared for him. She fed him. She stayed up sometimes, always taking care of him, always teaching us school and cooking, and she constantly had Juan Antonio in her care. Because why? Because she loved him. And I don't know what DSS doesn't see, that it's, I can't. My parents took Juan Antonio to the doctors, and DSS says they neglected him. Why would parents take their child to a doctor, but DSS calls that "neglection"? I don't understand it. But summing this up, my parents love me, Juan Antonio, and all my siblings. My parents love us to the fullest extent that they can. Thank you.
Joy, Aurelia, and Jewel Buckley, followed by Jennifer Walshlager.
My name is Joy Buckley. I am nine-years-old, and I miss and love Juan Antonio and would like him home soon.
Hi, my name is Jewel Buckley, and I miss Juan Antonio, and I want him to come back home.
Jennifer Walshlager, followed by Kim Evans.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Walshlager. I live in Stafford County, Virginia. I've been a resident there for 13 years. I've been married for 20 years to a great man. I have three children of my own. I've known the Buckley family since September 2015. I've seen the way other DSS offices work. I'm from Maryland, and I've seen, unfortunately, situations where children have needed to be removed. I've worked with children for 20 years, informally. I'm not a professional teacher, but whether it's in church or teaching literature to groups of children, I've never seen incompetence like I've seen with Spotsylvania DSS. I didn't plan to come up here and say that today. I sat through the criminal trial as much as I was able. It was my anniversary, so I wasn't there for all three days. But I have seen this case drug out in a fashion that, I'm sorry to say, and it may be because I don't have all this insider information, but it looks like it's being drug out purposefully to ensure that those 15 of 22 months are met and exceeded. I don't see evidence that Ms. Crooks or anybody else really cares to reunite Juan, and I don't understand why, like other people I've seen where parents have been given second chances. The fact that I've taught two of the nine Buckley children, Joy and Aurelia, I've always seen them clean, well-cared-for, nourished. I can make judgments, just like the lady, the doctor, who was able to, who was at the hospital at Walter Reed when Juan was admitted, and she said she could see evidence of malnourishment. She's allowed to do that just based on observation because she's a doctor, and thankfully, this isn't a criminal trial, so I can just give my observation. I've never seen anything wrong with these children. And yet, Juan, who was known to have a medical condition, the same as his two older brothers, they just go ahead and say that that's going to be a criminal trial, and that's going to be a case for neglect, and that he's been abused. Well, you know, medical things are very tricky, as we all know, and sometimes there's just not easy answers. And I find it deplorable that a criminal trial, where the evidence there was found to lead to nothing, if it's being weighed on now for a civil case, well, that raises a curiosity in my mind. If that evidence isn't being weighed for this civil trial, well, then it would seem to be the subjective information of this 45% turnover rate of people. It's curious. What are they basing it on? I just wanted to let it be known that I'm an upstanding citizen. So is my husband. So are my children. And my opinion of Spotsylvania DSS really could not be lower. I hate to say it, because I know the people who work there, they got into the line of work because they love children. They care about families. But for some reason, I'm just not seeing evidence that that's how they feel about the Buckley family. And I just want to implore them, and implore anyone who has any kind of a voice to help in this situation, to do something, because it's starting to seem like a TV show or a movie, where there's no answer, and no one is helping. And even if your hands are personally tied, I can't read your name. I don't have great vision, even with my new glasses. There is always influence that can be had. I just trust that you're good men, and that people who can have influence are going to try to exercise it as best they can to reunite the Buckleys.
Kim Evans, followed by Kathy Hansen.
My name is Kim Evans, and I'm from the Lees Hill District. So you may be wondering why I'm back. I'm here to support the Buckleys and request you, whether it's in your job description or not, to listen and help. I sat in a meeting with the Buckleys, with the CASA worker, with the attorney Ed Lightem, and at least three social workers, and asked them specifically what they could do to work with DSS to get their child back. Most of them gave me a blank stare, and then one of them said, "Have them talk to their lawyer." "Alma, talk to your lawyer." That's it. That is all the communication that they were able to give. Alma and John faced criminal charges for neglect for Juan Antonio. They have been anything but neglectful. They researched doctors. They took him to Charlottesville for testing. They consulted more than one pediatrician. He was hospitalized more than once. Where Alma took her son to the hospital both times, he was a sick baby. His parents had the resources and sophistication to research doctors to keep looking until they could find answers. One allegation of neglect was related to Alma's desire to continue to nurse her baby. Any book, Google search, physician's manual will attest to the benefits of breastfeeding. Most neglectful mothers don't try to nurse their baby to death. This mother was accused of gross neglect. She was changing her diet, having allergy panels taken in order to figure out if what she was eating might be a problem for Juan. No doctor told her to stop. The, quote, "neglectful parent" made decisions in which they believed were best for their child. The mother and father accused of neglect desperately want their son back. Without help from DSS, they have sought counseling, psychiatric evaluations. They had a base social worker come to their home weekly to observe. The so-called neglectful parents have paid thousands and thousands of dollars in lawyer's fees and spent countless hours in praying, meeting with lawyers, and visiting Juan when DSS allows. So back to February 23rd, 2018. Juan's been in custody for over a year. After two days, the judge hearing the criminal case finds that there is not evidence to support the claims. So one might think that that would change the communication and the involvement of DSS, that possibly DSS would then begin, move towards working with the family. Nothing has happened. For 25 years, I've considered myself a social worker. I have taken children to visit their parents in prison. I have worked with parents in counseling and classes. I have testified in court for the termination of parental rights, so I know how bad it can get. I have no logical way of understanding the hysteria and accusations of the Buckley family. Something happened. Something went wrong. Fear captured the mind of those involved.
Ma'am, I'm very sorry, but your time has expired.
Kathy Hansen, followed by Steve Jewell.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Hansen, and I live in Stafford County. I'm here on behalf of the Buckley family. I know the Buckley family from church and homeschooling. I'm here today to raise your awareness of their interaction with the Spotsylvania Department of Social Services and to ask that you look into their case. The Buckleys deserve a second chance. While I believe the DSS was initially well-intentioned, it is apparent that they misjudged the Buckley situation and now refuse to work with the family to reunite the youngest Juan Antonio with his parents and eight other siblings. I know this family to be dedicated and virtuous, working tirelessly to provide for and invest in their children. I understand the goal of DSS is to keep families intact whenever possible. Those at the Spotsylvania DSS do not appear to want Juan Antonio to return to his family, even though the parents have fulfilled and exceeded all demands given by the DSS for reunification. The Buckley's name and character were cleared after the criminal charges were dismissed without sufficient evidence. On top of that, they also have eight other healthy, well-adjusted, accomplished, thoughtful, kind children in their home, to include two college students. Please look into the Spotsylvania DSS, their director Gail Crooks, and most urgently, the Buckley's case. If this is happening in Spotsylvania, what is to say it won't occur in my county? Please stand up for family. As Mr. Yakubowski said, "Bring it to light." The Buckleys deserve a second chance. Juan Antonio needs his family as much as they need him. I've read what I prepared today, but I want to thank you because it does appear today that you are seeking the truth and standing up for family. Thank you.
Steve Jewell, followed by Bill Brannon.
Members of the board, my name is Steve Jewell, Stafford County, Falmouth District. I've known John "Captain" Buckley for about three years now. And I remember when Juan was ill, I was on security duty for our church. And I remember Mrs. Buckley often coming out and taking Juan out of the daycare because he was having such a hard time. And to see her nourishment to Juan while they sat on the couch in the lobby there amazed me. I mean, here's a mother that loves her kid, and then all of a sudden, out of the blue, I'm told that Juan got taken away. You've heard a lot of testimonies this evening. We had a semi-good brief, I guess you could say, from DSS on processes and procedures. But there's, I think Gail said, there's checks and balances, but I don't think there's been checks and balances on this case. Granted, you can't do a lot where you're sitting, and we understand that. And I applaud you for your questions, especially some of the questions were very direct, and I applaud you on that. But as it's been stated by others, there's influence. You can influence others to make this happen, to get Juan home to his parents and to his brothers and sisters. I've never seen, I wish you could come to the church. Those kids are awesome. They play in the orchestra, piano, always well-kept, always well-mannered. And I would be honored to have those as my kids. But bottom line is, something's wrong here, and we need to be able to get to the resolution of what's going on, whether it's racially motivated by DSS. I don't know. But there's a problem, and the problem needs to be resolved. And whether it goes up to the state, that's an issue to go up to the state. But I would hope that through influence within Spotsylvania County, DSS will come to a conclusion that there's no physical damage. There's nothing wrong with bringing Juan Antonio back home. He's been gone long enough. And once a week, being, having lived through that when I was deployed, coming home to see my kid once a week, it's not easy. It's very hard. And I don't know if any of you have gone through something like that, but it's very difficult dealing with DSS. And so Juan needs to come home, so he remembers his family. That's all I got. Thank you for your time.
Bill Brannon, followed by Britton Brannon.
Good evening. I'm Bill Brannon. I'm from Stafford County. And I'm here to advocate for the Buckley family. And I'm a retired Marine, if you can't tell. And we live by our core values of honor, courage, and commitment, and integrity, and other things that just mean something to us that I don't know if the rest of us can understand, when it's life and death and when it's the people that you care for. And in the Buckley's case, as it was stated, I understand there's limited things that you can do. But what I would ask from all the other things that you're hearing and from my personal knowledge of the Buckley and Buckley family, the things that are important, if there's the advocacy and the other things that you can do and the people, the other groups that you can influence, if there's one family in one situation that maybe is the takes for you, maybe there's a one-in-a-lifetime opportunity to advocate for. I would just challenge you to say that this is that situation. Thank you.
Britton Brannon, followed by Mike Evans.
Good evening. My name is Britton Brannon. I'm currently a Marine officer stationed in Quantico, Virginia. And really, the big thing that I really just wanted to address, what Mr. Yakubowski said before, I really just wanted to say that all of you up there contain, all of you have influence, okay? And influence can be used to help in some way or another. And so whether or not the degree of helping might not be as much as some people might have thought before, all of you do have that influence to some degree or another. And you do have it a lot more than a lot of people who are sitting here today. Something else that I would just say is that, you know, as of right now, from what I've been told, October is the earliest timeframe that the Buckleys would be able to go and have this addressed formally in court again. And from the time that Juan Antonio has been separated to wait until October is absolutely unacceptable. And another thing I would also like to say is, you know, you heard Ms. Crooks today. Okay, Juan Antonio to her is the child or the baby. You know, Juan Antonio to us, he is a member of our church family and a member of the Buckley family, and he's Juan Antonio. He's not just the child. He's not just the baby, okay? So what I'd like to say, too, is that from the outside looking in, having them, again, not getting into like the criminal trial, which was said before, but just on the outside looking in, it seems like there's some sort of ulterior motive as to why Juan Antonio is still not with his family right now. And I'm sure all of us are familiar with what happened with Alfie Evans over in the United Kingdom about when the state likes to say that they know what to do instead of the parents and the family. And the family, obviously, is the one who cares the most about Juan Antonio in this case, but about their child. And so what I'd say is that because of the fact that what the state and what DSS is saying is being held above the family when there's absolutely been no evidence, in fact, there's the exact opposite of that with eight other beautiful kids who are completely fine right now, and the fact that that seems to somehow mean nothing, I'm not sure that that doesn't make sense just from the outside looking in. And so again, just going back onto something that's actionable right now because of the influence that you all have, I would say if there's any way, I don't know who you can talk to, but if there's any way to have that moved up from October to sometime that's nearer, that would be something that I'm sure they would greatly appreciate. And then again, just kind of looking into, maybe there's some sort of ulterior motive here, and maybe Ms. Crooks isn't the person who should be handling this case or should be involved in this job. Thank you.
Mike Evans, followed by Thomas Phillips.
My name is Mike Evans. I'm in Lees Hill. I'd like to thank the board for listening to us and thank the ladies from DSS for sticking around and hearing the community's concerns. I appreciate that. I'm also a lawyer. I listened to, I wasn't at the criminal hearing because I had to be at work. But my understanding is that this case was dismissed on something like a motion for judgment for acquittal, which is basically, once the government's done presenting their case, there's a motion done by the defense, and basically the motion says the government failed to prove its case, and they dismiss it. So it's not a, you know, beyond a reasonable doubt standard. We heard both sides, and the judge dismissed it because of, you know, he believed, there was a reasonable doubt. The standard is, under the federal criminal statute, and I don't have the Virginia one. I'm not a Virginia attorney. But it's evident that it's insufficient to sustain a conviction. So I guess that could lead you back to beyond a reasonable doubt. But in my opinion, as an attorney, it's something less than beyond a reasonable doubt. And we've talked about preponderance of the evidence. And in other judges' ruling, my hope is that the criminal judge's view of the evidence that had to be very similar to what the previous judge saw will eventually rule the day, and Juan Antonio will get to go back to his parents. The timelines that are set out by DSS are important, and they're all short. And none of them last 17 months, as long as this kid's been away from his family. So I desperately would implore, and Mr. Yakubowski, I'm probably destroying your So I desperately would implore, and Mr. Yakubowski, I'm probably destroying your name, but I came away from your comments feeling like I shouldn't get up and say anything, because whatever I said was worthless because you have no authority to do anything. But I decided to come up anyway. So truly, truly, I hope if it's influence, if you have some authority, I hope you, I hope you go into the books and find it, and ask for the review. They are open, they appear to, I used to be a juvenile probation officer before I came in the Marine Corps, they are open to review. They said it here, they said they had concern, they want to know that the community believes in them, and you're hearing from the community, so truly, truly, I hope you can find a way to kind of picket this, so we can understand what's going on, not to find fault, we're not, nobody's, nobody's looking to sue anybody and get any money from this, they're looking to get their son back in their home. And they're looking to do it tomorrow, vice, you know, next week or in October. I'll just close with, you know, as a juvenile probation officer, I saw cases where it was horrible, and I can't imagine in a case that's as allegedly as bad as this, where eight other children are left in the home and interviewed, and not a word is said about any of them. This, this young man belongs back with his family. Thank you.
Thomas Phillips, followed by Scott Beebe.
I'm Reverend Thomas Phillips, former pastor of Temple Baptist Church, missionary to federate states of Micronesia and the Philippines, and presently a member of Temple Baptist Church with the Buckley's. I live at 103 Phillips Street in Fredericksburg, Virginia. I have a few things here that I was going to go, but you have heard them several times over already this evening, so I'm just going to bypass those and just go to a couple of things that I think are of interest to me. Little Juan has been separated from his family now for a long period of time. One of the hardest things to do is when a child at that age is separated from his family, is trying to get them back together so that they'll bond again. The longer this goes on, the more difficult it is going to become. So I think the importance is, is trying to get them back as a family so the family can operate. The Buckley's are a fine example of what a family should be, maybe not according to social standards today, but they are truly a fine example. Their kids are well-trained, well-disciplined, and, well, most of us like to have our children under the accord that they have theirs, very much so. I know that there are not a lot of things that you can do, if much of anything, but don't, don't downplay your influence. Now, it's easy to say, "We can't do certain things," and that's true, but you are elected individuals that have influence in certain areas, and I would encourage you to use that. The trial that's coming up in October before family court, I have sat in family court for several times, and I've seen the way it works. The judge comes out with the caseworker, and the decision has already been made back in the room before the case ever comes to hearing, before the public. Please, don't let that happen again. Thank you.
Scott Beebe, followed by Robert Hall.
Good evening, ma'am, good evening, gentlemen. My name's Scott Beebe, I'm in the voting district of Fredericksburg, Virginia. And what occurred to me as I listened to the great insight from every man and woman here in this room this evening, is that a man and a woman need financial support to take care of a family, but to go to the ways of taking care of the family which degrades the way God would have you do it is embarrassing. There's a sign on the side of the road in Salem Church Road of a young man, I guess, who was killed, and it says, "God knows." And he knows everything that we do, and that includes our jobs and what we're doing to keep our jobs. Let no man say when he is tempted, "I am tempted of God; for God cannot be tempted with evil, neither tempteth he any man." Therefore the Buckley family does not serve a God who tempts them, but rather challenges them. Wherein ye greatly rejoice, though now for a season, if need be, ye are in heaviness through manifold temptations; that trial of your faith being much more precious than of gold, that perishes thith, though it be tried with fire, might be found unto praise and honor and glory at the pairing of Jesus Christ. Whom having not seen ye love, in whom, though now ye see him not, yet believing, ye rejoice with joy unspeakable and full of glory, receiving the end of your faith, even the salvation of your souls," and that goes to the Buckley family. For the Buckley's to lose Juan Antonio into the supervision of a fallen world is nothing more than the world being what it is, fallen. A mother and father who have given our society nine children, Mr. Buckley who is serving as a commissioned officer in the United States Navy, and Mrs. Buckley who has bared nine children and has taught them everything she knows, including how to play the instruments which echo their sounds within Temple Baptist Church. But for some odd reason, Juan Antonio was chosen out of the nine to be pulled away from his mother and his father. With myself being a retired United States Marine and having been under investigation before, there is no release of the investigation unless no fault was founded. And Mr. Buckley has been released from his command investigation because there's no fault founded. I ask you, ladies and gentlemen, to see the works of Satan himself, and how he can get involved in lives of people and families, especially those who follow Christ Jesus. Since losing Juan Antonio, the Buckley family has remained faithful to their faith in Jesus Christ, to their church, and to their everyday lives, which includes tending to their eight other children. Please give Juan Antonio back to his family, the family in which God desired him to be with and not with DSS. Thank you.
Robert Hall, followed by Carol Ann Hall.
Good evening, my name is Robert Hall, I'm from Spotsylvania. Back in 2015, a gentleman by the name of Ron Altman passed away from ALS. He was a member of our church, and he basically provided a sense of security for our church in the foyer. And January of 2016, Pastor Reed asked me, as a retired Marine and as a current security manager for the Army, if I would head up a volunteer detail of men in our church who would stand up and volunteer to just provide a sense of security during church services. I've spent many a Sunday morning in the foyer, providing some sort of watch for our church, and one of the frequent visitors that I had during 2016 was Mrs. Buckley. And she would spend two and a half to three hours in Sunday morning in the foyer comforting Juan Antonio. That's not neglect, folks, that's anything but neglect. She would stand up there, walk around and pace around, comforting him the best way that she could. She didn't have to, she could have stayed home and left Juan Antonio in his bed, but instead she chose to be with the rest of her family because the Buckley's are all about family. And she took care of him and comforted him to the best of her ability. I know Juan Antonio's story very well, because back in February of 2016, God blessed us with our first grandchild, and she was the first girl in our family. My wife and I have raised three boys. And this past February, we celebrated on February 11th, our granddaughter's second birthday. February 11th also happens to be the exact same birthday of Juan Antonio, that's how I know him. The Buckley's didn't have that opportunity to celebrate Juan Antonio's birthday this year on February 11th because the court's taken that opportunity away from them. What happened to the Buckley's is wrong, and if you have any authority, any possible way of correcting this situation, I implore you to do so. Thank you.
Carol Ann Hall, followed by Abe Jacob.
My name is Carol Ann Hall, and I am from the Livingston District. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your ear. I've known the Buckley's for over two years, I've had the opportunity to observe them in a variety of ways. I have seen how they have managed their large family, and I have always been impressed. Without exception, John and Alma have always shown that they are loving, kind, patient parents to their children, their children are well-behaved, they're clean, they're well-dressed, they're well-taken care of. The older children are accomplished in music, they're very talented, you can tell that time has been invested greatly. Alma and John are good parents from my every observation. They deserve a second chance with their son, Juan Antonio. Juan deserves to have a chance to grow up in this loving family. They are a wonderful family who love God, they love and serve their country, and John and Alma love their children. I would just ask that if there is any influence whatsoever that you all have, that you would use it for good for this family. Thank you.
Abe Jacob, followed by Laura Culp.
Good evening, my name is Abe Jacob, I'm from Fredericksburg. I'm a father of seven, and I've known this wonderful family, the Buckley family, over the past two and a half years or so. Our families share an abiding faith in Christ, and a great shared love and awe for this great nation. A lot of what I wanted to originally say has already been said, but I just want to use an analogy here. Sherlock Holmes and his assistant Watson were camping out one night, sleeping at night, and Sherlock asks Watson, "Watson, what do you see?" Watson looks up, and he says, "Well, astronomically, I see the Orion and all the other stars, and astrologically, I see this, and ontologically, I see this," and goes on with all that. At the end of it, Sherlock Holmes says, "Watson, you idiot, our tent has been stolen." I saw the DSS folks there with wads of books this thick. I was just telling my kids yesterday, "You want to see the forest, don't come up this close to the tree and say, 'Well, the forest looks brown.'" No. Look at the whole picture. This is the community. We know the Buckley's. We know them well. We care deeply about our church family and the Buckley family. Look, folks make mistakes. What I'm hearing is a lot of gobbledygook from books very thick. It's okay if DSS folks make a mistake from time to, you can, you can, you can back up from that, you can apologize for that, you, we're a forgiving group. You can right or wrong. This is a community telling you that something very wrong has been done to this family. It is something, it's common sense. Common sense speaks loudly here. And I'll echo Mike Evans's comment, when one of the supervisors made it sound like you have no authority. We're, we're sitting on seats fairly comfortable, you folks are sitting in seats much more comfortable. But let me tell you something, this story sounds like it, it comes out of a repressive communist country, but we live in America. Let's not let this slide down the, down the dr-
Sir, I'm sorry, but your time has expired.
Laura Culp, followed by Joshua Culp.
My name is Laura Culp, I live in Stafford County District. I am here to speak on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Buckley. I first met the Buckley's about six months ago. A couple of weeks later, Mrs. Buckley was visiting me in my home, told me of her situation. It's that time, I've spent some time in their home, they've spent some time in mine, and I've always, their home has always been clean and inviting, it is, they've shown, been loving toward their children. I've seen Mrs. Buckley preparing treats for her children involving them in the preparations, I've seen her working to find ingredients to supplement where, to make do because of food allergies in their family. I also attended the Buckley's criminal trial in February when the judge gave his verdict of innocence to the Buckley's. He said that disagreeing with a doctor, having reservations of, and having a discussion about a direction of medical treatment was not cause for criminal, for a charge of criminal negligence, that DSS did not have a case against the Buckley's. He chose to throw the case out. Yet he's, DSS still insists on keeping Juan Antonio away from his family and categorizing the Buckley's as the worst of parents for these very reasons. If DSS gets away with removing Juan Antonio from his home and not returning him when they have no evidence of wrongdoing, what does this mean for the freedom of parents across this nation? Even doctors are capable of making mistakes. Parents should not have to fear losing their children because they asked a question, or they sought a second opinion for their child. If you go to the doctor, you're going to want a second opinion if you are given a diagnosis and a certain course of treatment, and they want the same for their children. The Buckley's have completed more than one parenting class to satisfy DSS's requirements. They are giving everything they have to both care for the family in their home and defy it to get Juan Antonio back. Please consider doing anything that you can to influence the return of Juan Antonio back to his home. Thank you for your time.
Joshua Culp, followed by Seth Haynes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here, thank you for hearing us. This is America, we have that right. I'm a resident of Stafford County, I've lived there for 12 years, since I resigned my commission as a captain in the United States Marine Corps. I'm an engineer by trade, mechanical engineering and systems engineering. I've been taught to think critically, objectively, to weigh all the facts, to look at a situation and see it for what it is. Many here this evening have asked a question, "What is the ulterior motive, and why?" I am not an expert in this area, but as an innocent bystander, a third party, it appears to me that money is the reason. DSS gets paid more per month for a minority child than a white child. Why? DSS has people with checkbooks standing in hand to buy a baby. They are not incentivized to restore families. I think the system is broken, thank you for your time.
Seth Haynes.
My name is Pastor Seth Haynes from the city of Fredericksburg to speak on behalf of the John and Alma Buckley family. I know them through Temple Baptist Church, we attend there together, and I've observed their family three times a week for the last year and a half. And I was shocked, to say the least, upon learning what DSS has perpetrated against them in the name of, quote, from their own statement, "Protecting children and adults from abuse, neglect, and exploitation." And no doubt, they've served thousands in this county in that way by protecting them from legitimate harm. However, in this case, I believe they've not only failed to meet their stated purpose, but have actually induced harm to both the child, Juan Antonio, and to the entire Buckley family by nearly stripping them of their parental rights and placing their son in foster care with the intent to adopt. I've been in the field of education, both in public schools and private schools, in fact, there are men on this board whose children I have had in my own classroom, in both the states of Ohio and Virginia, public and private for over 16 years. And I've observed legitimate cases of neglect and abuse. And the Buckley case in absolutely no way resembles neglect or abuse in any sense of the terms. Their other eight children are always well-groomed and well-behaved, they're well-educated, they're trained on multiple musical instruments, and are among the most respectful young people that I know. And I know a bunch of young people. These are not only, these are not the qualities typically exhibited by a family fraught with abuse and neglect. As a pastor, as an educator, a father, I can assure this Board that John and Alma Buckley are loving, caring, compassionate parents with the highest standard, who have followed all the doctor's orders in the best interests of their son, with which a Spotsylvania County Court has already agreed when granting a move to strike in favor of the Buckley's concerning the criminal case that's already been mentioned. Yet, DSS continues to violate the parental rights and the right of their- Yet, DSS continues to violate the parental rights and the right of their son to be at home. And I am urging all of you on this board of supervisors to do everything that you're able to do to influence a thorough examination of what has taken place in this case. Hold DSS accountable to do that which is right and just and return Juan Antonio Buckley home to his parents as soon as possible. Thank you.
There are no other citizens signed up to speak.
Is there anybody that did not sign up to speak that wishes you may come forward?
My name is Rachel Pitts, and I am from the Chancellor District. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak, even though I didn't sign up. I am a musician, and I have a master's degree in violin performance from the University of Georgia. I have been a private music instructor for 18 years. I am actually the teacher of the Buckley children and have been giving them string lessons since the summer of 2014. I recall the first time they attended my studio. My husband and I were newly married and lived in a tiny 450-square-foot home at the time when Alma Buckley brought the kids, six of them at that point, into our home. What could have been a very chaotic experience was quite the opposite. The children were well-behaved, orderly, and while each one of them has a very spunky and fun personality, they knew how to be respectful of me as a teacher and quietly listen. When they were not taking their lesson, they were doing homework. Alma amazed me. She had a grace about her and could focus on the child taking the lesson as well as attend to any question or need another had. To me, as a first-time mom of a nine-month-old and not a multitasker, she is truly an amazing mother. Both John and Alma have brought the children to weekly lessons for four years now, and I am always impressed by their dedication to seeing every one of their children succeed in music. I remember when Juan Antonio was born. He became a special part of this family and never lacked for attention or love. Alma almost always took charge of him in our lesson time, and it was so sweet to see her enjoy all the baby antics like he was their first child. I remember when he started struggling around six months of age. It was extremely rare disease to diagnose, and I watched as they diligently attempted every possible avenue to make their son well. Week after week, John and Alma took him to appointments, tried numerous alternative medicine, and researched every possible method to help his little body recover. I know what it's like to try everything and struggle with your health, as it took me 10 years of stomach issues to determine I have Crohn's disease. I could talk more about what an upstanding family the Buckleys are, but I will end with my strong belief that Department of Social Services in Spotsylvania is oblivious to the character of this family. I'm sure DSS has their legitimate cases to remove children from their parents' care, but in this case, their actions are wrong. Through these years, I have seen this family treated unfairly. I've seen the DSS abuse their powers, and I've watched them flat-out accuse the Buckleys falsely. As a resident of Spotsylvania, I sincerely hope you, as our local leaders, can see the truth in this case. If the, quote, "primary welfare of the child is the highest goal," then Juan Antonio deserves to be a part of this amazing family, his amazing family, and I hope that you can have a part in returning him to the Buckleys. And I'm going off script, that's scary to me, but I have a nine-month-old who has been waiting for me this whole time in the car with his daddy, and I just know that he is really needing me right now. He wants to eat and go to bed, and Juan Antonio needs his mom. He's having to live without her, and that, that is not natural. And I know it, my time's up, so if I was to be able to speak to Gail, I would say Juan Antonio needs his mom. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that did not sign up that wishes to come and speak at this time?
Good evening. My name is Deandre McLemore. I'm a resident of Chancellor District. I'm an Army veteran, a computer engineer, and an adjunct professor. I'm here today on behalf of John and Alma Buckley. We are connected through our faith, our friendship, and we belong to the same church. During our time together, I've known John and Alma to be outstanding parents. All of their children are well-behaved, educated, and very friendly. But not only do we share the same faith, we both have a special needs child with a rare disease. And like many of my church friends said earlier, Alma would always be in the front foyer with Juan Antonio. I would know because I would be out there with my son as well. And I've never seen her do anything to harm him. She's always provided nurture, guidance, and extremely great care. During my conversations with the Buckleys regarding Juan, they have always conveyed and exhibited the best intentions, whether it was his medical care or overall well-being. Juan was taken at 10 months old by DSS. He's now two years old. And during multiple interviews and investigations, they haven't found anything, no wrongdoings by them. The other day at church, John mentioned that his family is incomplete, and I'm coming here tonight to ask this council to help make his family whole again. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Scott Schamansky from Stafford County. And again, thank you all for taking the time to listen to us. My family has known the Buckleys since probably November 2016. We met them at church, like many other people here. We've been to their house for playdates and birthday parties. And on one occasion, it was hard to explain to my two girls, seven and nine-years-old, why Juan Antonio was taken away from them. And I explained to them that people sometimes make mistakes, just like I make mistakes. But then again, I don't wait over a year to correct my mistake. I try and find a solution to their problem and correct it so it does not happen again because foster families are in need. And we do have some very good foster families in this county that are willing to accept children, and I feel that we're wasting resources and funds on something that does not need to be done. And thank you again.
Is there anybody else that did not sign up but wishes to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public presentations. Now, do we move to informational matters, I think?
Yes, Chairman, I think that brings us to my report. I had three things I wanted to mention. Chairman, you might recall that at Agenda Wrap last Friday, where you were participating by phone, and some of us present in my office were giving you a hard time thinking you were standing in the wrong place and maybe breaking bubble wrap repeatedly because we could not hear you. That was actually a problem with the phone system, and we will have some detail on that forthcoming, should be a solution. But if, in case the citizens or other supervisors or other staff had problems with telephone communication the end of last week, it was the system, not them.
Hey, Mark.
Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank everybody that came out tonight. I've been on this board seven years, and I can't think of more people coming to the podium for a single issue. And your respect of each other, your respect for DSS, not clapping, not being exuberant or disrespectful is much appreciated. And I think each one of you, I know it's been a long night for each of you, but I can tell, as the Buckley's representative on the Board of Supervisors, I'm thankful for each one of you coming out tonight. I can't thank you enough. I hope it really does make a difference. Wanted to say that before you left. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, go ahead.
And then there was yesterday. Email was down in the afternoon. I notified the board by text. Last email I received was 2:48 PM. I got a text from Jay Crayle on Jane's staff at 10:37 PM that my email was back. I was the last to be restored, and I just, I wanted to thank publicly Jane and her team, including Rich Maidenbaum, Jay Crayle, Terrence Rasko, Chris Kraus, Wayne Oyo, Vasily Aronoff, and the whole NTS, the multiple NTS contractors. That's how many staff it took to get email restored for our whole system. It was a great effort, and folks stayed late to make sure that my account got back on, and I very much appreciate it. Last item I had for the board's notice and some direction, hopefully. Recall, the board's retreat is scheduled for this Saturday, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Merchant Square Building, Third Floor Code Compliance Conference Room. I had sent some information around relating to the suggestion of an outside moderators from Decide Smart LLC. They are highly experienced local government professionals that did a management analysis for us at Rappahannock Regional Jail that produced substantial savings for the county. And I've talked to them about moderating the event, the retreat on Saturday, and I've sent you details about that and was coveting the board's direction on how to proceed with that matter.
Any comment from the board? Ms. Skinner?
Are you looking for a direction at this time?
Yes, sir, Mr. Skinner. I sent around information that after refinement with the Decide Smart folks, based on their hourly rate and expected time to moderate the event, compile notes and present, send us back a written report and summary that they will review with me, will have edits to it as necessary, and have a unified mission document going forward from the Saturday event. That is the intention. The cost is $9,000. And the question is whether or not to engage the outside resource. Based on their very valuable work for the regional jail, I think it'd be valuable to have them engaged in this process, and I think the board might benefit from having an outside neutral moderator to work with on the occasion.
I would say that it would be beneficial for us, and especially if this work retreat is going to talk about a transportation plan and, you know, the future. I think we can't just look five years. I think we need to look at a plan maybe called 2040, or where we want to be at 2040. I think there's people out there, I've used certain people like that on the VRE and PRTC to get an established plan. We've been trying to do this for as long as I've been on the board, and perhaps that $9,000 would pay off in overall the end, and I would certainly support that on my end.
Any other comments? Ms. Ross?
Hey, Mark, I had sent, I disagree. I think it would be a time for staff to, I think Mr. Marshall sent out an email that I agree with wholeheartedly, to collect our thoughts, what we feel would be a good strategic plan, and then perhaps at a later date, if we still need guidance, to bring that in. I think bringing somebody in at this time, after we've been talking about a strategic plan for a year, two years, it'd be somebody new, it'd be somebody not familiar with our board, it'd be somebody not familiar with our thoughts, and I think we need to get those cemented before we pay $9,000 for a day's worth of work. I also sent you just a draft strategic plan to share with the entire board. I don't know if it came through or not, but I haven't seen it go back out to the entire board, just as, as my thoughts on what a strategic plan should be. Doesn't make them the right, but I think it'd be good to start in place as well. Did you get that?
I did get it. I don't know if it's gotten back out.
I haven't seen it come back out. I haven't checked my email today.
I will say, Mr. Ross, I made, I sent it to the other electronically.
Okay.
One had issues, and I printed, I actually printed them this morning for the.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Good, Ms. Marshall. Sorry, Ms. Ross.
I was trying to, actually, I was trying to find the email that. I agree with Mr. Ross on this. We've got a six-hour schedule for this retreat. We also have a space needs study that we're going to be doing. We'll be talking about the space needs. We have a couple of different projects here in the county. $9,000 in a six-hour period, I think, is a waste of money where we can, we may need these guys' help in the future, but we, besides the document that I was, I didn't get the communication electronically, I just got it today for Mr. Ross's plan. But besides that document and just a brief discussion amongst individuals here on the board, we haven't got a, we don't have a basic outline for how we want to do the strategic plan yet. I think we need to, we need to start bare bones, get an outline of what we want to do, and then proceed with maybe some help from these professionals.
Any other comments from the board? Mr. Yakubowski?
Thank you. Whatever the board wants to do, I'm fine with, but I do think that we need a little bit more guidance than the seven of us sitting around and putting ideas out. I'm not sure how that's going to be collected. I'm not sure what format it's going to be put in because I'm not even sure if this board even agrees what the strategic plan should look like. So, I mean, this is, this is, you know, a little premature, perhaps. I wouldn't necessarily disagree with that, but I just don't want Saturday to be a waste of time after we finally got a date after years of trying for us to begin a strategic plan. And I would agree with Mr. Skinner that what we really need to do, whether it's a space needs or whether it is a strategic plan, is to look out 20, 30 years. I don't know if anybody took a look at the space needs that Mr. Taylor had sent out from 2001, I do believe it was, but 2003, somewhere around there. It's been a while. But in that document, it says that the population of our county by 2020 is going to be 200,000, and we're nowhere near that. So, but is it a bad thing to look out 20, 30 years in the future? Because 30 years ago was 88, and at that time, I think we were 50, 60,000 people, and we've doubled since then. So, you know, moving, moving the line way out there and then working back from there, I think, would definitely be helpful. And I think what we might need to do is just identify the big items, and I do have a copy of Mr. Ross's plan here, his draft, and he has several of the items that we can put in here and then discuss because I think that there are certain issues that kind of drive what we want to do, and our sort of decision-making process really comes through in the budget, and that is really what drives what the board is trying to do. And so, if we know where we're trying to get to, then our budgets then can reflect how to get there. And I really think that that is key. So, if we want to try it without a collaborator now, that's fine, but I think at some point we might have to have somebody that can pull this all together and put it together in the right way. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Dr. Chairman?
I would be okay with waiting and meeting with or talking to the consultants at a later date.
I'll just say, try to be as nice to us as I can. You know, we've got seven different individuals with seven, seven different ideas of where we should go and what should be in a comprehensive plan, what shouldn't. I guess my question to the board, to each of us, is who's going to be up front on the chalkboard to write this stuff down and try to wrangle the conversation in the direction it should probably be? Because I know Mr., well, if I was Mr. Taylor, I'd be running from that assignment like herding cats. I just, Mr. Yakubowski?
Yeah, are you looking for nominations? Because I'll nominate you.
No. I mean, I'll do it, but I just, I don't, I don't want this to be a waste. I truly don't. And I don't know that we, I'll put faith in us that we're going to give it a wholehearted effort, but I, you know, I think at some time, we're going to need somebody else to come in and kind of help guide our total thoughts and input to this because I imagine we're going to be writing, or somebody is going to be writing, or I'm going to be writing quite a bit of information down and then trying to put it in some sort of understandable piece of literature. That's what scares me. I'm willing to try it. I think the majority of the board is leaning to not trying to have a third party, and I do agree, $9,000 is a lot, especially if you're going to spend one or two hours of that six on space needs, which that could go in all directions, too. So, we'll give it a try with, without guidance. I guess I'll be up at the chalkboard. Thank you. I can certainly use it. I just, like I say, I don't want this to be a waste, and I would like, I will ask that each of us, I'll just say September, let's go, let's look at another date where we can actually bring in that third party and hopefully wrangle this thing even, even tighter to where it's something that's going to be usable for not only us but county staff and that the citizens can be proud of us all as a group. So, Mr. Skinner?
I just want to, sure, this is a public meeting, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, so I know for sure that that conference room that we're talking about is somewhat small, and I'd just like to have a standby in case we get a flood of people in there. Gail, this is the one that we met with Virginia, the new gentleman that runs DSS in the state, correct? That's the one?
No. Right, the Code Compliance Conference Room.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, then, no worry. I got that. Thank you very much.
I'm hoping the public will give us a little bit of a break and try to, give us some privacy to try to work on this one, these two specific topics. I won't hold my breath, but I just want us to do our due diligence to try to get this at least initiated. So, I guess we're on for Saturday, first thing in the morning and.
8:00 AM to 2:00. Dr. Trampi had suggested pizza around midday, and there have been frequent questions, not frequent, occasional questions from department directors as regards expectations of attendance versus the board's hope for an opportunity for a smaller conversation among itself. And the aim is to please. What is the board's pleasure for the staff?
I know, I know if, now, I'll just speak for myself. I don't see a need for it, at least at this time. We only got six hours? Is it six hours?
Yes, sir.
Six hours plus a lunch to try to get these two topics in, and I don't know that bringing staff isn't going to be conducive to our time restraints and what we need to do as far as some sort of outline that we can all somewhat agree on. That's just my opinions, unless y'all want staff on standby on a Saturday. I don't, I'm getting a lot of shaking heads, so we'll go with no. Appreciate their, you're welcome, staff. So, Saturday, 8:00 AM to 2:00.
Yes, sir.
See what we can do.
Thanks very much. That's all I have. We do have multiple closed-session items.
All right. I guess you want to read us into closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chair. This will be your resolution to adjourn in a closed meeting, whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn in a closed meeting for a discussion of assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the county, specifically the Director of Human Resources and the County Administrator, and whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn in a closed meeting for a consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically regarding traffic and public safety matters and matters of planning, zoning, and utilities, and whereas pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711A1, and eight such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters.
Motion by Mr. Skinner? Ms. Skinner? We're going to do voice vote, or we're doing, I think we got, okay. Sorry about that, too used to the old way.
Seven yes.
All right. I'm taking a break first. However, come back out, it has to be.
We do need a voice vote on this. Whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas Section 2.2, 3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors hereby returns to open meeting and certifies by roll-call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion to convene in a closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Coming your way, Mr. Skinner. Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampi?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Chair, aye.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I would respectfully request a motion to approve the personnel agreement, which was discussed in closed session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Skinner to accept what Carl said.
That's what we got. Mr. Trampi hasn't voted.
I'm pushing.
He voted no.
He voted no. That's X, red act.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm pushing like crazy on this thing.
I'm hitting yay.
Thank you.
Six yes with Dr. Trampi voting no.
I know I'm hitting it. You can't not hit it. That just came out of that 40.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Yakubowski. Oh, oh, shoot.
Y'all can do that on the voice phone.
Okay, and then we're supposed to take these iPads with us, right? Not just.
Motion fails.